Welcome to the City Council's May 12 City Council Meeting. This is a teleconference meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating remotely to ensure proper social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. I would like to introduce staff and City Council members. Vice Mayor Drew Combs, City Council Member Catherine Carlton, City Council Member Ray Mueller. The staff includes City Manager Starla Jerome Robinson, interim City Attorney Kara Silver, and our City Clerk Judy Heron. Ms. Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and members of the City Council. Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting of May 12. At this time, I will be providing a brief overview on how we will be conducting the meeting. The City Council will remain on screen and be asked to maintain control of their own microphones. Staff will turn their webcams on and engage their microphones during the staff presentations. Public comment will be handled similarly in that the mayor will call for public comment, and it is at that time that those of you who are in attendance as members of the public and wish to speak on the item that has been called for public comment will use that hand feature, should be on the right side of your screen. That initiates a raised hand and will be able to call on you, open your mic, and proceed with the public comment. I will be repeating that information as we come to the public comment for each item, but for those of you who are currently with us, that is how it will be handled. And at this time, I return the meeting to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. So the next item on the agenda is the informational items. Are there any City Council members that would like to pull and discuss these items? I'm sorry, it's the consent calendar. Forgive me. I am out of order. Actually, I was trying to take a few items out of order. I would like to bring the informational items after consent. And Councilmember Carlton, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I had someone ask me about D3, so I would like to ask a question about that before we vote on it.
Chief Bertini, Councilmember Carlton has a question about D3.
Good evening, City Council Members. Dan Jacobson, Assistant Administrative Services Director. This will actually be one that I can probably help answer.
Okay, thank you. The question about that is if you look further into the staff report, there are a lot of things that are being cut from the police. For example, one of the things that concerned me was cutting the information line so that people dialing 911 would have longer hold times, which is pretty critical if you have someone breaking into your house, your husband's had a heart attack, you know, where every second counts. We don't want that to be delayed. While we're looking at making those kind of cuts, we're also looking here at spending over $100,000 on a computer system. And I've been asked, is that really necessary to upgrade the computer system now when so many other critical services are having to be cut?
So these computer systems are actually no longer supported, or many of them are no longer supported. They use old operating systems. So that's the primary increase here is to basically refresh them to current technology. And then I guess the second thing that I would highlight is that these come from IT master plan funds, so they're a different funding source than most of the considerations that are on the agenda item for later this evening.
Okay, so it's a matter of safety that if they go down, we need to make sure that our computer systems that the police use are, we're able to support them appropriately. Is that correct?
That is correct. And these are actually the systems that are in the vehicles, so these are the ones that are around town allowing officers on the ground to have access to the information and be connected with other parts of the patrol units.
Okay, great. All right, thank you very much. I appreciate that information.
Are there any other questions on the consent calendar? Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I did not receive, oh, actually, we did receive one web form public comment on item D4, which is available on the agenda on our website. So if anybody wishes to see that, they may. And then at this time, again, we ask any member of the public to engage that hand feature on the right side of your screen if you have any public comments on the consent calendar, items D1 through D4. At this time, I do see one public comment for this item. And it is going to be Jennifer Johnson. Jennifer, give me one moment, and I will engage your microphone. Jennifer, are you able to?
Yes, Judy, Councilmembers, thank you for having this meeting. I actually wasn't intending to, I apologize, sorry. I wasn't intending to attempt to comment on this item. I was trying to submit a comment for the commissioner, for the commission and committee appointments. I apologize for my error. You can.
Not a problem. Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, so again, at this time, we're accepting public comment for items D1 through D2, which is our consent calendar. Please engage the hand. We do have one public comment from Greg Connellin.
Want to speak on E2?
On E2, sir?
Yeah, the one about the opening up the streets for restaurants?
Thank you. So when we call for public comment on that item, you can go ahead and engage that hand, and we'll call on you then. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, one more call for any public comment on items D1 through D2 consent. See, none, Mayor. We can return the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And I understand the confusion for the public comment for Ms. Johnson on item C1. There are two items on the agenda that we are pulling. The first is C1, Consider Applicants and Make Appointments to Fill Vacancies on the Various City Commissions and Committees, and item E3, Approved Resolution 6554, Amending the City's Records Retention Schedule. So those two items will be removed and continued to a future meeting. So if Ms. Johnson still had a comment, yes, Councilmember Mueller?
With respect to the commissions' appointments, if we're going to be moving it to a different meeting, I was going to actually make a suggestion. We've received a number of comments, and I know I have, of people who weren't able to apply, who didn't even know that there was applications taking place at this time. So I actually was going to visit the idea with the council of reopening it up for 10 days to allow people to apply for the various commissions. If you look at the commissions, there's a number of the same act complaints over and over again, but even in our planning commission interview, we learned of one person who had said, I had applied so long ago, basically, my application was stale. So with that in mind, I was, I thought it might be a good idea to let, to actually see if there are people out there who want to go ahead and apply.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that as well. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I'm supportive of that. I would only say, I know in the past, we've sort of done this, and then there's sort of no specific or additional outreach. And so then Judy comes back to us with the same number of applicants as we had before we extended the application period. So I would just say that, like, I'm totally supportive, like, of providing more time, but that, you know, we should possibly take the onus on ourselves to make sure we're communicating with residents that they do now have more time to apply for these positions. So, but yeah, totally supporter.
Okay, thank you. And then the 10-day period that you were talking about, Councilmember Mueller, did you want that to start today?
Sure, that'd be great. That'd be fine. Or I can start, why don't we start it tomorrow when the notice, or as soon as the application, as soon as the notice goes out, we're on 10 days from then. And this isn't reflective of anybody who has applied or anything like that. It's just because through this process, we discovered, yeah, we really, COVID-19 really had distracted people. They weren't, you know, most people weren't even aware that there was a list right now.
Councilmember Carlton?
I was just looking on my calendar. Hold on while I open it up on my computer. That will give us 10 days, gives us to the 23rd. Will that give us enough time to have it posted? Why don't we do it seven days from tomorrow, from the 13th to the 20th, and then we have enough time to post it for the 26th? Seven days, okay?
That's fine with me.
Let's do seven days from tomorrow.
Yeah, the only.
Just to follow up.
No, I would only, the only additional issue is that, like, if there are more planning commission applications in there, there will need to be scheduled another planning commission interview session, and so that has to fit in there, there, too.
Considering planning as well, or the other?
All of them.
Okay.
All of them.
So was it the expectation that this would be back on the May 26th agenda? Because I think that agenda is going to be very full. I thought maybe we would be bringing it back more in the June-July timeframe. Absolutely not. I do not want this to bleed into July. If we can't do it by May 26, I'd like to see it at the next City Council meeting.
That is the next City, oh, that's probably the next City Council meeting.
June? We don't have one in June?
Oh, we do. I'm sorry. I thought you said May 26. I'm sorry.
No, the next one in June would be?
June 9.
June 9.
All right, we'll shoot for June 9.
Okay, that sounds great.
So just for clarification, we are extending recruitment for all advisory bodies through, you can do through May 23rd. That would be the 10-day if we bring this to the June 9 meeting. Does that work for the City Council?
Yes.
Okay. And if we do receive more planning applications, just know that we will probably be scheduling a special City Council meeting for those interviews. And if that is the direction of council, that's what we'll do.
And Madam Mayor, we do need a motion on that.
Yes, on the extending the planning commission?
Yes.
Planning commission and all the other commissions. Okay. Make a motion, Councilmember Mueller?
I thought we were, is it going to be 10 days or seven days?
If we're able to bring this back to June 9?
I just want to make sure we have enough time to schedule interviews.
If we bring this back June 9, then we could bring this recruitment through, let's say, Friday, the 22nd, which is next Friday, and we can inform the planning commission interviews that last week in May, or even the first week in June, if we're doing appointments on June 9.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor from Councilmember Mueller.
I'll second.
And just quickly, because we were in the consent calendar, right, which we haven't voted on, did we?
Correct.
Is it okay, then, to take this and then go back to that? Okay.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And by roll call vote for appointments being extended and recruitment extended, Mayor Mueller?
Yes.
Carlton?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously, and we can return to the consent calendar at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Okay, if there aren't any more questions on the consent calendar, can I have a motion to accept the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion, sure.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Mueller, a second by Vice Mayor Combs to approve the consent calendar. By roll call vote, Councilmember Carlton? Thank you, Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
And Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. At this time, we are at our regular business, which is item E. The first item is E1, Provide Direction on Program and Service Reductions for the City Manager's Proposed Fiscal Year 2020-2021 Budget and Authorize Issuance of Notice of Intent to Lay Off Effective Positions. To introduce this item is Assistant City Manager Nick Pogaros.
Yeah, I can't hear you.
You're muted, Mr. Pogaros.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Madam Clerk, may I please have the ability to project my screen?
Yes, one moment.
There we go. Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Nick Pogaros. I'm the Assistant City Manager. And the item before you this evening is to seek direction from the City Council on budget development for the fiscal year 2020-21, which begins on July 1. As many, as the council knows and members of the public know, the stay-at-home order that has been in place to protect public health has had a significant impact on the city's operations as well as the revenue. We are seeking City Council guidance this evening in advance of presenting the City Manager's proposed budget, because the reductions necessary for next year's budget is, are so significant that we want to make sure that we are adequately capturing those in the city, in the City Manager's proposed budget, so that we can then move through to adoption. This is the beginning of our budget process. There will be three additional meetings, at least, where the City Council will have the ability to tweak and refine the City Manager's proposed budget. Again, this evening is really to provide, seeking direction from council on which programs and services are acceptable for consideration. Your, any feedback you provide this evening, or any direction you provide this evening, is not a final action by the council. The only action that's final will be the final budget adoption, which is scheduled for June 23rd. And then subsequently, the budget is a living document, and it's a financial plan, and we're in the middle of a very uncertain period. And so there are opportunities to amend the budget as necessary in next fiscal year as new information emerges. So with that introduction, I will hand it off to Assistant Administrative Services Director Dan Jacobson.
Thank you, and good night again, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. So moving to the agenda tonight. We'll start with an overview of the direction staff is requesting of City Council this evening. We'll move into the methodology staff used to identify and sort the potential reductions, and we'll discuss some counterbalancing options for revenue increases, and we'll finish up with a review of the requested direction. So tonight, staff is requesting two actions through this item, and the first has several components. The first request is to provide direction on program and service reductions in order to allow a timely preparation of the City Manager's proposed budget. Included to support this action is a review of the significant budget changes that will be included as adjustments to the baseline, a number of potential service reductions, potential changes to revenues, which would reduce the need for service reductions to achieve a balanced budget, and finally, the consideration of which one-time money sources are available to City Council if council desires to limit those expenditure reductions. The second action is a follow-on from the requested direction to identify desired service reductions. In the city's contracts with its negotiated units and its personnel rules, there is a layoff notice requirement. So staff is requesting direction from the City Council to authorize those layoff notices to those staff which will be impacted by any identified service reduction tonight. Just briefly on the methodology, as mentioned in the staff report, the tools typically used in preparation of budgets on a year-to-year basis were insufficient for the scope of the situation presented by the pandemic, and as a result, we'd really like to review some of the assumptions and process used to identify those potential service reductions. So on the assumption side, the first is the revenue shortfall, a $12.7 million revenue shortfall as compared to the fiscal year 2019-20 adopted budget is the same as that previously described to City Council. Staff does continue to incorporate new information, but the major change to this revenue assumption will be tied to services offered in fiscal year 2020-21. In order to balance the budget in light of the revenue shortfall, there are three major categories of options available to City Council. Those are expenditure reductions, revenue increases, or use of one-time money. Expenditure reductions can fully achieve that, but the impact to services would be substantial, while revenue increases and the use of one-time money are not sufficient to structurally balance the budget on their own. So we'll detail this in greater, or we'll discuss this in greater detail later, but the framework used was different than typically done, so it will require some additional clarification. And finally, it's important to note that the amount of uncertainty included in our current understanding of the crisis. So we won't cover it in this presentation, but Attachment B of the staff report runs through several revenue recovery scenarios, but the range of outcomes is very wide, given how little can be known at this point, and simply understanding that many of those changes, many of the revenues are tied to the services offered, and as a result, there's a fair amount of uncertainty, you know, at this point in time. So on the revenue side, the slide outlines several cases for revenue in fiscal year 2020-21 with respect to the baseline level. Again, that is the 2019 adopted budget. It's the same information as previously presented, though I would like to highlight the categories represented in "other," given that that was a question before. So these are baseline numbers of 1.2 million in utility users taxes, 2.07 million in franchise fees, 1.75 million in business license tax, 0.85 million in fines, 1.54 million interest in rent income, and 0.06 million in donations. So these categories are all somewhat smaller and less flexible than the ones presented here in detail, but did want to highlight what those were. So the scenario used for purposes of identifying expenditure reduction targets is the medical, middle numerical column, the best guess, and it's a total of $12.7 million in fiscal year 2020-21. So the first item on the expenditure side, personnel costs. This table shows not only the baseline of fiscal year 2019-20, but the negotiated increases by employee group and the effect on fully burdened costs relative to that baseline. The fully burdened cost includes the cost of living increases where applicable, increased CalPERS retirement rates, taxes, healthcare, and various insurance costs, all rolled up together. These baseline changes total 2.88 million relative to the baseline. Again, this is not making any other changes, with the exception of one that's in the unrepresented confidential. So the next expenditure item is non-personnel operating costs. It's displayed here by department. These are the same numbers as previously presented. They total 22.6 million citywide in the general fund. Again, these are presented as a refresher of those numbers that were previously presented. There, this baseline has not changed because it's based on the 2019-20 adopted budget. And so previously, the City Council directed staff to identify options to balance the budget without the use of reserves, but I do want to show the recommendation that staff made previously for purposes of comparison with the substantial expenditure reductions outlined in this report. The recommendation was to reduce personnel expenditures by 4.57 million, non-personnel expenditures by 4.1 million with an additional potential $2 million identified, and to use one-time monies of up to $4.6 million to balance the budget. Again, highlighting the budget is a living document, as Mr. Pogaros mentioned, and that our understanding of the trajectory of the crisis will continue to rapidly change over the coming months. Unfortunately, we don't have the luxury of knowing now what we will know in what could be much more illuminating in September or January of next year. So as mentioned before, the tools typically available were insufficient to address this magnitude of change. As the City Council's subject matter experts, department heads used a range of metrics to evaluate services which could be modified or suspended, and these are described in the staff report in greater detail and in extreme detail in Attachment A of the staff report. The major categories used were the effect on essential or mandated services, the guiding principles of the 2016 general plan update, department's recommendation for tier at which the service modification be placed, and the overall impact on expenditures. In recognition of the City Council's April 7th resolution affirming the city's commitment to the values of equity, fairness, and justice in responding to the COVID-19 crisis, the impact on citywide equity is the category used to group most service changes within the staff report. So the other category that we would like to highlight, so the main consideration here is service level reductions, but do want to highlight that the City Council has two other levels available. These are, which we'll cover briefly now. So on the revenue side, there are several tools which have requirements that differ depending on the tool. The first and easiest option is the utility users tax, or UUT, which is currently at a reduced level of 1% for all utility types. However, if council desires, those reduced rates could be allowed to expire, and they could return up to the maximum of 3.5% for electricity, water, and gas, and 2.5% for cable, phone, and wireless. This could result in an increase of up to 1.92 million if the current expiration date of September 30, 2020 remained. It is important to note that these rates can be changed with 60 days' notice, so they could be reduced in the future if the full rate were not needed or otherwise adjusted. These, this tax has already been approved by voters. It is in the municipal code, so no additional action is required by City Council to change this one, so that is the easiest one. Next step is the business license tax. This is a current tax that's in effect, but it hasn't been updated for some time, and as a result, it has a cap which is relatively low in current-year dollars with respect to gross receipt collections. So a change to this would require a ballot initiative, but if passed, could be in effect for calendar year 2021 when renewals are done. The estimated increase on this is 1.05 million. Again, that would be fully within the fiscal 2020-21 fiscal year, due to the timing of any potential changes on this, assuming it were passed in November. The next item on the list, as outlined in the staff report, a user fee study could be done to better capture the cost to provide services which require modification under new social interaction guidelines. These include a range of services, and the cost recovery policy and service mix would dictate the revenue generated by this. It is important to note that this does have some lead time, and consultants for these services are typically in high demand in uncertain economic situations, such as the one we find ourselves now. And then finally, on this list, the transient occupancy tax, TOT, or hotel tax, could be increased through a ballot measure if approved by voters, and the amount of the tax would be dependent on the rate increased as well as the actual occupancy, occupancy and room rates observed by hotels. This would not be in effect for the first half of the fiscal year, however, due to the timing of the November election cycle. This would not be in effect for the first half of the fiscal year, however, due to the timing of the November election cycle. So as mentioned before, the last lever available to city council is that of one-time money. The table shown outlines several sources of one-time money applicable to the current situation. The economic stabilization reserve is estimated to be 11.6 at the start of the fiscal year, July 1st, 2020. The unassigned fund balance estimated at 2.1 million. The unused general capital funds, which originated in the general fund and could therefore be transferred back at 2.7 million. And finally, the general fund makes an annual infrastructure maintenance transfer to the general capital fund, which is slated for $3 million in fiscal year 202021, and could be suspended or reduced. It is critical to note that these last two changes do require coordination with the capital improvement plan as the availability of funds affects which projects can be funded and to what extent within that CIP. So understanding that this once again is a huge amount of information in a very short period of time, I would like to reiterate the direction staff is requesting in the city council tonight. First, staff request direction on the fiscal year 202021 budget in terms of service reductions, any revenue changes that are desired, and finally, the use of one-time monies as a final tool. Second, staff requires authorization to issue layoff notices to those staff affected by any service changes. And these notices would be issued, these notices, if issued by Friday, May 15th, would be in time to take effect prior to the next fiscal year. However, due to the timing of those, due to the length of the layoff notices, any time after Friday would result in some layoffs actually occurring in the next fiscal year. With that, I thank you for your time and your attention, and staff and department heads are available, happy to answer any questions you have. Just a note about this section, I will be turning my webcam off just because there's a limit to how many people can be on at one time. And there may be a number of different staff who come on to answer your questions depending on what those questions are.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson, for the presentation. At this time, are there any clarifying questions from the council before we go to public comment? Okay, Ms. Heron, can we? How many public comment speakers do we have on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Um, just a reminder that web form public comment that was received before the meeting is available on the agenda on our website. So at this time, for any member of the public wishing to comment on this item, which is item E1, you'd like to engage that hand feature to the right side of your screen. We can open up your mic and you will be able to provide your public comment. So we'll give it just a couple of seconds here and see. Okay, so our first public speaker is going to be Christine Padilla. Christine, your mic is open. If you would like to provide your public comment, you can so now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Taylor and honorable members of the city council. My name is Pamela Campos and I work for Build Up for San Mateo County's children. Thank you for the opportunity to present a public comment regarding agenda item E1 of this evening's special meeting. I respectfully request your attention to tier-two reductions of the staff report, which proposes the elimination of preschool childcare at Menlo Children's Center and Bell Haven Child Development Center. Please oppose this budget elimination to support working families in Menlo Park who would be devastated by the loss of these spaces. Every day, childcare providers work tirelessly to create safe and nurturing environments that produce a quality upbringing for the youngest members of our community. Now, more than ever, it is critical that we work to preserve these spaces which are essential in providing a stable workforce for a thriving economy. Early care and education has always been essential community infrastructure, and we will be instrumental to response and recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic. When childcare is local, affordable, and accessible, it enables more parents to enter the workforce, thus allowing businesses to reopen and grow in response. Prior to the pandemic, the county of San Mateo was facing a shortage of 11,000 spaces for children ages zero to five, with 1,471 of those spaces needed in Menlo Park. The Bell Haven and Menlo Children's Center makes up 13% of the preschool center spaces in the city of Menlo Park. Infrastructure for childcare is indispensable and must be preserved to combat this shortage. To open a new childcare center is a process that often takes years of navigating the planning, permitting, and real estate markets of local communities who are in urgent need of care. Over the years, research has demonstrated the vital importance and necessity for families to have access to nurturing, high-quality, early care and learning spaces in their community. During the first five years of life, we know that nearly 75% of the brain develops. At these centers in Menlo Park, children benefit from Big Lifts programs supporting kindergarten readiness and family participation. The loss of these critical resources is devastating to all, and especially to the 96 low-income families who access these subsidized programs. Your thoughtful consideration on this issue is greatly appreciated, and we have faith that you may consider the devastating impacts of eliminating the Bell Haven Child Development Center and Menlo Children's Center. And it is my hope for the community that these assets, which are integral to the economic stabilization and establishment of a robust workforce, will remain intact for a road to recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you so much for your time this evening, and I am wishing you all very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Our next public comment is coming from David Fleishman. David, you are unmuted if you'd like to provide your public comment at this time.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Member, City Council members, and city staff. I'm David Fleishman, Executive Director of the Childcare Coordinating Council of San Mateo County. I'm a member of the Childcare Partnership Council, and also of the COVID-19 Childcare Response Team. I submitted a letter and I'm speaking tonight to request that the Menlo Park City Council preserve the two preschool childcare centers slated for elimination as part of the tier-two reductions. There are four points I very briefly like to highlight. Preschool, the first is that preschool and childcare are essential services. They are necessary to support working families, to support the reopening of society, and the economic recovery. Elimination, number two, is that elimination of childcare would be stripping away needed infrastructure that will have lasting detrimental impacts that will be very difficult to reverse in the future. So there's some optimistic talk of budget amendments coming and some possible restorations in light of the cuts that will have to be made. This is one that would be very difficult to, to bring back. Number three, childcare, as I think most of you know, is an economic driver. It is in and of itself for the owners, administrators, and the childcare workforce that it supports. And it is an absolute necessity for families in which both parents or one parent and single-parent families are working. Low-income families, of which there will be an increasing amount due to job loss, are especially hard-hit with all the other vulnerabilities and fewer options. And so that brings me to the last point I'd like to highlight tonight, which is that Bell Haven CDC is close to 95% Title V, which means it's high standards and state subsidized, fully spaces, supporting working parents. This means Bell Haven is serving the lowest-income families in our county and is also part of the Big Lift, which, as you all know, is a county-wide initiative to raise third-grade literacy. So losing Bell Haven also means a loss of state revenue and the end of leveraged local funds to support children's developmental needs in a community that needs it most. There aren't easy answers. I'm sorry we're all faced with this. And as Pabmasol eloquently said, I wish you all well and please stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your public comment. Our next public comment is coming from Carmen Low. Carmen, you should be unmuted and able to address the city council.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes, thank.
Good evening, mayor and council members. As you've heard from local leaders thus far, I'd like to share additional insight regarding Bell Haven Child Development Center per my recent position as the coordinator for two years. The center receives a state preschool contract with over $1 million. The amount increases each year with the state's May budget revision and annual amended reimbursement rate. The center also receives two additional grants with one Big Lift covering 90% of the full-time, of one full-time teacher, one part-time office staff, one family engagement specialist, field trip expenses, and program supply expenses, in addition to another grant that covers more program supplies. This totals about $1.2 million in external funding sources to operate the center. Per item E1's staff report, under Table 7, Tier 2, the city projects a savings of $1.7 million with the elimination of the center along with its 15 full-time employees. So hypothetically speaking, with the savings amount of 1.7 million, in addition to the 1.2 million I mentioned in external funding for operations, the program is assumed to be spending about $3 million on operations annually for four classrooms, four classrooms. With my time at CDC as the most recent coordinator for the past two years, this has not been the case in expenditures. Last fiscal, the center received over $1.1 million in contract and grants. The program received an additional $106,000 from contract over earnings from the state to offset additional expenses. The program is again projected to over-earn this year, and I can tell you they have high potential to consistently, yes, I said consistently, over-earn their contracts each year. I also wanted to note that the Ravenswood School District has merged some of their elementary schools, as you may all know. Bell Haven Elementary, that's across, that's across from us, will now serve double the amount of families and students in the upcoming fiscal year. So the already-present high need of care in the community will increase at a higher and faster rate. Closure of the current program impacting one of the high-risk communities would mean children and families bearing the cost and consequences. With my recent experience and understanding of the program, along with its budgets and grants, the program is financially self-sustainable with proper management and understanding of state funding and programs. I'd like to urge the city council, mayor, along with the city, to review the appropriate budget numbers associated with Bell Haven CDC in reference to the large amount of contract monies received and reconsider the proposal of Bell Haven CDC's preschool being eliminated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carmen. And our next public speaker is coming from Mayrin B. Mayrin, you are off mute and able to address the city council.
Hi, good evening. You can hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for your time. I'm a little nervous. This is my first time doing this, so I'll keep it short and simple. Just wanted to add to all the comments ahead of time to reconsider the impact on some of the proposed budget cuts, especially in our community of Bell Haven. I'm coming from the perspective of being currently a teacher at Beechwood School, resident of Beech, Bell Haven for 11 years, and my son attends the Bell Haven Child Development Center as well. I've had the opportunity to have both of my children also attend Menlo Children's School Center. So for me, I really have been part of the Bell Haven community, and I've seen it blossom and grow with all the programming and with all the proposed cuts that will affect not only the residents, but the students at Beechwood who majority rely on the after-school program at the Aneta Community Center, the library programmings that are offered at the Bell Haven Library, and all of the wonderful teachers and programs that are invaluable each day at the Bell Haven CDC and as well as Menlo Children's Center. So just wanting to put it out there that if the proposed cuts happen, that you, we are left at Bell Haven with no library, community center, childcare. What is left for the children in the community? What is left for the other residents of the community as well? Because it impacts not only the working parents, the children, the senior center, all of us together. Teachers at Beechwood, we represent also all the children that are a part of the community. So just wanting to know that what is the options for the Bee, the Bell Haven residents and students and children when all of these services that are proposed to be cut are eliminated? Where do we go? Where are they going to get the enriched programs that we've been so gracious to have, the opportunities to have for the last few years? So just thinking about how that affects the people that you represent and predominantly it, why these cuts are mostly in the Bell Haven community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayrin. At this time, our next public speaker will be Morgan Diolati. Morgan, you're off mute and able to address the city council.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Sorry for the background noise. Actually, we have young children in the background. Thank you for taking my question. I want to basically second all the thoughts that have been expressed so far regarding the concerns about childcare services. And I have a question for the city staff. I'm a numbers person, and I'm really, I would really like to see what the assumptions were and with the, for the numbers that were presented this evening. And that would be used to make a very impactful decisions for all our community. Our children are currently enrolled at the MCC preschool and after-school programs. We love those programs, and frankly, we feel that we couldn't survive in this community without these important services. So please consider looking again at those numbers. We understand we're under, you know, duress, COVID is impacting everyone. And our decisions have to be made, but please consider that our young childrens, our offsprings, the environment that we want to create for them, and look again at the numbers and make a decision that tries to preserve the future of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan, for your public comment. Our next public comment comes from Nikhil Colley. Nikhil, you are unmuted and able to address the city council.
Thanks, Judy. Thank you, Mayor Taylor and, and council members. A proud Menlo Park resident for the last 10 years and a father of two. And my wife and I collected some comments from yesterday and today when we became aware of the news. I had a private online conversation with Representative Combs, as we live in Lorelei, and so I wanted to share some thoughts. I certainly empathize with all of you and the tough decisions you have to take, not lightly, about making sure that the city is solvent and fiscally responsible. But as a parent, I wanted to make sure that you had some personal reference on some of the things that we face and specifically a few points in that. One is specifically around the voice our children have about advocating for the importance of MCC and their classmates and the community bond that the teachers they've built in this troubled time. But as a sense of community that both MCC and Bell Haven provides so that kids can feel a sense of community and the sense of bonds that they've built over the years and eliminating that program and what it does to sort of their growth. The, the second is this very personal story about how MCC is a beacon for attracting and settling young families to Menlo Park. Last July, my wife and I had the wonderful, very prosperous opportunity to buy a home. And after living in Menlo Park for eight years, we specifically chose this based on the city's offerings and sacrificed a great deal personally to, to be able to afford to live here. And this offering specifically around the childcare and the development opportunities with the libraries and the programs that you run are those reasons that we chose to be here at a great cost to us. So I would very much like to support the city and the council in other means so you can retain these programs, yet, yet also be financially responsible. And so we're always looking to help in doing that as constituents, as residents, as parents, so that we can still keep these programs. So we're offering that to you. And, and thirdly, I think the, the point that there's, there's a large amount of community being built, not only in the children, but in the, in the families that, that MCC is a part of and the teachers and the administrators that are running these programs. and the administrators that are running these programs. I think closing or eliminating those programs will very much loosen the community forces that, that Menlo Park has has come to be very fond of and proud of. And, and the last point I would leave you with is that just the complete lack of available childcare if we were to remove these childcare resources. And so it's really important as a young parent of two, both preschool age childrens now, now that my second son is a year old is, is that there is a very hard scarcity of resources to take care of our children for working families. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address it.
Thank you, Nikhil. At this time, our next public comment is coming from Gabriella Buendia. Gabriella, you are unmuted and able to address the city council.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. I am the program manager for the Early Childhood Mental Health Consultation Program at Star Vista. And kind of echoing what we've all heard, I want to really speak to the work that we've done supporting Belle Haven Center specifically. For the past 15 years, our program has had the privilege really of serving the Belle Haven Center, providing early childhood mental health consultation services. And we've worked really closely with the teachers who we see every day working tirelessly, supporting the most vulnerable members of our community, which is young children from low income families, most of them minority. And, you know, we, we see the work that they do. We see the heart that they put into this work and we just, we just, and many of them have been there working for 20 plus years and really have given their life to, to their community. We support these teachers and the families around issues such as chronic stress that the families face, homelessness, severe trauma, developmental delays that children might have, and connect them with resources in order for them to, to obtain early intervention services before they start school, before they start elementary school. So we know firsthand that for a lot of these families, the, this school in particular that we support and preschools in general, we know are safe havens. They are places where they have access to resources that, you know, might be hard to access otherwise, and that really can set the trajectory of a child in a really positive direction. So losing a program like this would be detrimental to so many families and children who really need these services. Who, this is maybe the only place where they may be able to access services that they are in need of. So I just wanted to speak to that. And I also empathize with the tough decisions that you have to make right now. But as an advocate of preschool and of children, I just wanted to make sure that, that our little piece of work in consultation was heard. And so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Gabriella. At this time, our next public comment is coming from Osnat Lowenthal. Osnat, I've unmuted you. You can address the council. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you, council, for letting me speak. And I, again, we learned about the recommendation to eliminate the childcare only yesterday. I actually want to ask about two things that, that jumped at me. One is the word elimination. I did see other programs that the staff recommended to reduce or restructure. But for childcare, both the Belle Haven and the Menlo Park Children's Center, the, the word that was used was eliminating. And I, I questioned the the smart, the, the, I questioned that, why, why eliminating and not looking at other options? The second question is regarding, and somebody spoke about it earlier, is about the number that we saw there of the 1.2 million in expenditures. As far as I know, and I've been with the Menlo Children's Center, my kids have been there for the past 15 years. We've been part of that community. It's not the first time that we fight for the survival of those two childcare centers that are so important in this community. And as far as I know, we, we moved a very long way from being those subsidized by the community in 2009. And as far as I know, in the past few years, both of those programs and especially the Menlo Children's Center, which I know more of, I know that he's, it has been self, self sustained, self, self sustainable. And it has been operating at cost. So I would really be interested to see how those numbers that we saw in the budget cuts came up. Really curious to see what has changed. And, and again, to echo everything that people said before me, those are essential services. Those are not nice to haves. They help people earn money, have children in this community, and just live healthier and better lives. So I would urge you, council members, to think carefully before eliminating those essential services. Thank you.
Thank you, Osnat. Our next public comment comes from Yuri Golani. Yuri, you are unmuted and able to address the city council.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. So good evening, mayor, vice member, vice mayor and council members. My name is Yuri, and I'm a parent of two children, the older of which is a student of the Menlo Children's Center. Like others before me, I would like to raise to the council's awareness that the MCC and Belle Haven Child, Children's Center have been put out for determination as part of next year's fiscal plan. To us parents, it came as a complete surprise that we've learned through one of our more diligent parents just yesterday. So we did not have any, a lot of time to prepare. There are many implications to such a decision, and among them is first and foremost, the concern for our children who are at this time in complete chaos. They have no voice, and we have to be their voice in this meeting. In fact, unlike us, they cannot grasp the reality they're currently living in. And what they want so much is to return to normal, meet their friends and their teachers. We've been presented with a deficit attributed to childcare. If this deficit is attributed to COVID-19, would it make sense to shut down an institution that has been a symbol of Menlo Park for many, many years in order to overcome a temporary financial hurdle? Leaving many employees out of work, many more children without their friends, and even more parents without the means to return to work once the sheltering place is lifted. There is no way back from this decision. It also seems like the numbers presented by the city are very dry. Do they consider other losses to the city with not having adequate and enough childcare? MCC serves as a magnet to pull young and strong families into the city. Those families buy houses, eat at local restaurants, and attend local classes. They are at the heart of the economic growth of the city. Less childcare means less young families and then older Menlo. Menlo Park needs childcare to guarantee its future. Thank you.
Thank you, Yuri, for your public comment. Our final public comment comes from Kim Born. Kim? You are able to address the city council.
Great. Thank you. My name is Kim Born. I'm the executive director at Geo Kids Early Childhood Center, which is another childcare center in Menlo Park. And we also just heard today about the potential closure of the Menlo Children's Center and Belle Haven Child Development Center. This is part of this new budget. Before the coronavirus pandemic, the 2017 Menlo Park Childcare and Preschool Needs Assessment found there was already a deficit of over 500 childcare spaces in the city in preschool age group alone. I would guess that now in 2020, that number is much higher. And with the economic fallout of coronavirus, there will likely be even fewer childcare facilities that will be able to reopen when this is all over. Closing these childcare institutions will only exacerbate what could already be considered a crisis. At Geo Kids, we maintain wait lists of nearly 100 families per age, so one to two, two to three, three to four, four to five. Most of the other childcare facilities in Menlo Park have similar wait lists. Where are the children from MCC or Belle Haven supposed to go if their schools were to close? How are the Menlo Park parents supposed to return to work when there's no place for their children to receive quality care? Without accessible, quality childcare, our community cannot thrive. As the families of Menlo Park attempt to restart their lives, please consider that returning children to their safe nurturing preschool environment needs to be the first step. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kim. This time we have no more live public comment, but as a reminder, web form public comment that was received earlier is available on our agenda from our website. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you for the public comment speakers. I appreciate everything that you share with the council. And I definitely share your concerns. I believe that we need to definitely prioritize any educational programs for our children, whether it be library or a facility, a childcare facility. So I do share your concerns. At this time, I wanted to bring this conversation back to the council and find out if there is any follow up questions for staff.
Mayor Taylor, if I may interrupt briefly, I did receive one more public comment hand raised on this item.
Okay.
I know we've officially closed public comment, but am I allowed to open up that mic and allow the speaker to? Thank you. So our final public comment on this item is from James Payne. James, you're unmuted and available to address the city council.
Great. Thank you, Judy. And thank you, Mayor, and council members. I apologize for submitting this at the last minute, right after you closed it. But James Payne, I'm the vice chair of the Environmental Quality Commission, and I just wanted to submit a quick comment on behalf of the Environmental Quality and Commission and some work we've been doing recently, and just advocating for its consideration tonight. So tonight, council will be discussing Menlo Park's budgetary response to the COVID-19 crisis. And we, the Environmental Quality Commission, are writing to reaffirm our support for the city's continued action in confronting the climate crisis. It is essential that we do not view our responses to COVID-19 and to the climate crisis as being in competition for unfortunately limited resources. The actions we take to fight them have the power to address both at once. COVID-19 is tragically, but one of two currently declared crises that our city faces. The climate crisis also threatens to entirely upend our normal ways of living and, like COVID-19, will impact those most heavily who have the fewest resources to adapt. We have even witnessed dangerous synergies between COVID-19 and environmental pollution. Poor lung health has been a strong predictor of negative outcomes from COVID-19 and is directly linked to air pollution from automobiles and gas appliances. A UCLA study published just last month showed that the health impacts of indoor gas appliances costs California $3.5 billion each year, and that these effects are more pronounced for residents of apartments than detached homes. Here in Menlo Park, our lowest lying neighborhood, and thus the one most susceptible to inundation by rising seas in as little as 40 years, is also our most historically disadvantaged. We are heartened by the strong response to the COVID-19 crisis that our community at every level, government, businesses, and individual residents has demonstrated. This gives us more hope than ever that we can organize the same strong response to the climate crisis. Indeed, the COVID-19 crisis has shown the necessity of heeding early warnings from the scientific community, which is called resoundingly for rapid, far reaching, and unprecedented actions to help climate change. COVID-19 has also showed us the willingness of the community to mount a strong response to a crisis when given clear direction from its leaders. On December 10th, council expressed its support for achieving carbon neutrality by 2030. And in January, the full Environmental Quality Commission approved a plan recommending 10 broad actions to achieve that goal. Many of the actions this will require will also aid Menlo Park in its recovery from the effects of COVID-19. These include actions addressing air pollution, as we have all now seen the toll it takes, housing, as more of our residents than ever before will find themselves facing housing insecurity, and job creation, as our country is already experiencing levels of joblessness that is never before seen. We are therefore writing and speaking tonight to reaffirm, reaffirm the support of the EQC for the city's goal of achieving zero carbon by 2030 and the allocation of the resources necessary to achieve that goal. While on the surface, it might appear prudent to delay action on the climate crisis to save money now, it is actually dangerous to delay. As with COVID, every mitigation dollar we fail to invest now will cost us dozens more all too soon in the form of adverse health impacts, destroyed properties, seawalls, and community stress. As our city begins on the road to recovery from COVID-19, it is imperative that we secure Menlo Park against the climate crisis as well. Just as with COVID-19, every day counts, and the longer we wait, the greater this next crisis will be. Thank you all for your time tonight, and thank you for your services to the community.
Thank you, James, for your public comment. And there that does conclude public comment for this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. So I'll bring the same question back to the council if there are any follow up questions for staff or any comment from the council at this time. Councilmember Carlton?
Well, I'll go if nobody else wants to. I have a lot of questions. I'm, I'm going to go through this in the, in the order that it was in the staff report. So if it jumps around, I apologize. I'm just following page by page, just in case staff need to refer to what I'm talking about. On page E1.3, it talks about scenarios for, quote unquote, the city rescends layoffs. I just wanted to confirm that that means that the city can rehire staff if the county opens things up earlier than expected. For example, if we lay off randomly, I'll, I'll just pick gymnastics. If we lay off gymnastic staff because we're not having any gymnastics classes and for some reason, the county decides everything's open June 1st, July 1st, whatever. I'm just using it as an example, and we can provide those classes again in September. Even though we've laid off staff, we have the ability to bring them back so that they can provide those services again when the state or the county says that we're allowed to do so. I assume that's for Starla.
Starla, you're on mute.
Okay, here we go. If the council gives direction and amends the budget, we can definitely bring back, we can offer reemployment to former employees.
So it would require us to amend the budget to continue to provide sort of classes like gymnastics if, if everything opens up and it looks like that would be something appropriate for us and safe for us to do? Or anywhere, ever.
The framework in front of you tonight is for you to give us budget direction, which would allow for 40 dot, 45 day time period, which is required under our union contracts to issue layoff notices. At the time, anytime between now and when the council adopts the budget, they can change that direction as long as, they can change that direction and we can offer to cease the layoff or to rehire employees, former employees, based on where we are in that process.
Okay, having gone through this before seven or eight times now, I know that some of the classes that we offer do pay for themselves. And when you actually look at it on the report, it will say like 110% recovery, which means that it's recovery for the class plus the admin person that's, that's taking care of that class. If we have classes that, that literally pay for themselves, so it's not impacting the budget in any way, shape, or form. And we find out that the county opens 45, say 50 days from now, and they open it up for January. What would be the process for us to be able to bring those classes back for people? Sorry, I was still asking Starla.
Yeah, right, right. Well, I mean, I, I think once the council gave us direction, then we would evaluate the best way to bring those programs back, most expedient way to bring it back, taking into consideration any requirements under the health orders, such as, you know, social distancing and wearing masks. So, so I think it's probably best to say it's definitely possible. And in terms of a timeline, we'd need to know what the, what the restrictions were under the county order at that point.
Okay. And on 3.16, it shows that there are increases in the budget in community development, library, and police. Why, why does the, when we're trying to make so many cuts, why are there increases in the budget in those areas?
I, I'm going to defer to Dan on that one, but those are itemized in attachment A.
I apologize, councilmember Carlton. Can you repeat which table or section you're looking at?
E1.6? On E1.6, it talks about increases in community development, library, and police. And I'm wondering, at a time where we're making so many draconian cuts, why are we increasing certain expenditures?
So this actually goes back to what was outlined in one of the tables that was included for, or one of the major changes here is increase in cost due to negotiated agreements or CalPERS rates. So this is the sum total of a number of budget changes. So some of them decrease the baseline budget. For instance, the expiration of one provisional position would decrease the budget. Consolidation of some of the more flexible categories, such as temporary staffing, overtime, those would decrease the budget. But then there are a number which increase, and those are largely reflected by the cost of living increases due to the negotiated agreements or the cost increases by CalPERS. So these are things which are changes to the baseline budget that the city doesn't have. Some of those the city does not have flexibility over.
I see. So these are the things that were agreed a couple of years ago in terms of salaries?
The cost of living adjustments were previously negotiated, yes. And then there are a number of other categories. So these are all actually outlined in table 2. It is the, the table was too large to include in the staff report, so it's the attachment, but each of the individual components is highlighted in table 2 there.
So it's possible for us to still negotiate these. It's possible for us to speak with the unions about things that have been agreed years ago in terms of year-on-year salary increases. So that's something to note. On, I have some questions then about the police as well, if Bertini's available. On E1.10, that page, it talks about cutting proactive parking enforcement. I was under the impression that parking enforcement paid for itself. If it pays for itself, why are we cutting it? And if not, does that mean that tax dollars are subsidizing parking enforcement?
Good evening, city council. To answer your question, councilmember Carlton, there is some cost recovery from fines, but it's not 100%. And the different cuts that have been put into this, into this entire program from the police department's perspective goes down to the fact that we are required to do two things as a police department. We're required to patrol and have people respond to calls, and we are required to staff our P S A, our Public Safety Answering Point. Everything else is, as has been said in the past, is a nice-to-have. And in the end, we are patrol, we are patrol officers, and we have to answer 911 calls. Parking does not 100% pay for itself. Yes, there is some cost recovery, but it is not 100%.
Hmm, all right, well, that's good to know. I always thought that parking charges were so expensive because they paid for themselves. And I noticed it says online property crime reports. They won't come out, they'll just take the report. Does that mean that, I don't, I don't know if you come out and take fingerprints every time someone breaks into a house. I don't know what the process is, but I'm concerned that we're providing as good a service if someone just calls in and gets a report for insurance, as opposed to a police officer actually coming out and looking at what was broken into.
Right, as it stands today, your police department is a fully engaged, transparent police department that has extraordinary response times and clearance rates. So yes, we are such a full-service department that our motto is "you call, we come." So if these entire cuts were made, that would no longer be the case. We would not have the ability to investigate any kind of misdemeanor crime that did not have a known suspect. We would not send officers out to do evidence collection on misdemeanor crimes. We would be down to two detectives who would only be tasked with person crimes, in other words, crimes of violence, to investigate further than what the patrol officer's good. So in essence, what would happen is if you wanted to report a misdemeanor crime that was a property crime, you would be directed to make an online report for insurance purposes only, and there would be very little, if no, investigation into that crime.
Very little, if no, investigation into that crime?
Into that misdemeanor, misdemeanor property crime, that's correct.
Wow, okay. But it would go into some kind of a record where if someone is found with a stolen car and they find jewelry inside?
If the victim who is reporting it put accurate information into the online report, it would generate a, quote-unquote, "police case" that they can use for their insurance purposes. And if there were property that was serialized that could be put into a computer system, that would happen.
Like a bicycle?
Correct.
Okay. And then what, we're suspending overnight parking permits? I thought, I was so happy when that finally got online. I thought the point was that people could go online, get the parking permits printed out. Is that not the case? And if we're not, if we're suspending overnight parking permits, how does that work? Does that mean that people can never park on the street?
No, what that means is that is an entire proactive parking enforcement would go away. It would be, it would cease to exist. There would not be any downtown parking enforcement officers, and there would not be, would not be an overnight parking person. Right now, we hire, or we employ, an overnight park, two overnight parking persons that work 20 hours each, and they're the ones who are tasked with going out and issuing these overnight parking citations and dealing with the vehicles in the evening time. Under these, under this cut, all proactive parking enforcement would cease.
What about, I mean, that, what about the online permitting? If we have the online permitting available for people to, for free, for, I think, X many, what, 40 days or whatever a year, why wouldn't that still be available?
Well, they go hand-in-hand, councilmember. If you don't have enforcement, you don't need permits.
So we're no longer enforcing parking anywhere?
That would be a patrol, if these cuts were made, patrol would be able to enforce some parking as complaints came in, but it's the proactive parking enforcement that would cease to exist.
So it would only be complaints?
Correct.
Oh, that'll make some people happy. Okay, thank you very much. That comes, brings me to E1.11, which talks about child development. Now, I do remember that this is being subsidized, or at least I remember being told that this is being subsidized. I don't know if it's Starla or who can tell me. I took some notes when people were talking about various grants and things that are available. Can someone tell me, are we taking advantage of all the grants that are available to help pay for these? And if, are we using all the grants possible, and we're still subsidizing them? Who is available to answer questions about the child development for me? I don't know if that's Starla or?
Trying. So I think this is, this is one that Dan has more detailed information on that would be valuable to you.
Okay.
But I will answer the question that, are we using all the grants that are available? And to the best of our knowledge, we are, yes.
And we're still not breaking even, we're still subsidizing both of those programs?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. I just, I just have to say this, and I can't, I'm going to try and be polite and not emotional, but it's hard for me because for me, this is a really emotional subject. And I've gotten real emotional with staff about this a few months ago when we, when we closed this to begin with, and maybe more than I should have been. But I cannot begin to express to you how important, I believe, child development is. These services are huge, not only in enabling people to go to work, but enabling children to have the necessary exposure to preschool. They've shown without question how important it is for children to have preschool when they get to kindergarten. It makes them that much more successful. And God forbid, we need to make sure we have children successful in school, and we need to make sure that parents have a place that's safe to bring their children. And this is, there's the phrase, "save a penny, spend a pound." We must make sure that people can go to work. If they don't have a safe place to bring their children, they can't go to work. They can't go to work, they lose their job, then they can't pay their house payment, then they become homeless. It, it's this huge knock-on thing. These, it's critical for the child, it's critical for the family, it's critical for the economy that we have a safe place for people to be able to bring their children. And I just feel really strongly about this. Hi, Derek, I see your face up there.
Hi, councilmember Carlton, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Yeah, thank you for your question, councilman Carlton. Just specifically about the numbers that you mentioned, I did appreciate the, our former coordinator coming in, speaking during public comment. So the CDC does take advantage of a number of grants and so forth. It is a subsidized program, however, by the city. So currently, in this year's fiscal budget, the total cost to the general fund is 1.7, approximately. And the grants that we receive, not counting the big lift because that's reimbursable, it means you have to spend the money to get the money back, but the federal and state grants that we get roughly are around a million. So if COVID-19 did not occur, we would, general fund subsidy for that program would be approximately $700,000. With COVID-19, the good, the good news is, and I can report this to the council, is that our federal and state grants have been very supportive with all the distance learning that we're doing and so forth with the program. And so we're expected to achieve our grant funding based on our February numbers that we had, because that's what they're looking at. However, with, what we don't know is when we go into the next fiscal year with COVID-19 and the requirements about childcare, where you can only have two teachers per 12, and we would reduce the number of kids we conserve, that would also reduce our reimbursement. And so it would be a larger hit to the general fund. I think staff are estimating an additional $400,000 potentially for general fund if the state doesn't give us the full allotment. So hopefully that answers your question on the numbers.
Before you disappear, it's hard when people's face disappears. I don't know if they're listening.
I'll stay as long as you want.
Um, I want to make this work. I want to figure out how to do this, I want to figure out how do we keep this. I think it's critically important. It's going to cost us more in the long run if we don't provide the services. This is not, this is, this is, the money we spend here isn't a cost, it's an investment. We're investing in our youth, we're investing in our workforce. It's not a cost. And I just, I'm just not going to, I can't, with all good conscience, cut this. And so I would, I'm happy, if you need help, I volunteer. Whatever it takes, I want to make sure that we are able to provide childcare. Now, saying that, I realize that we're not able to provide childcare right now.
That's correct.
So when I say this, I don't want people to get confused and think it's going to open next week. We are, we can make things tougher than the state or the county, we can't make things easier. So when the state and the county tell us we are able to open them, I want to make sure that we can, whenever that is. And I want to make it really clear to people, because I think there's a lot of confusion on this. We may want to open things, but we are not able to open things in many cases until we're told we can. But when we can, whether it's the summer of September, January, whenever we can, I would like to make sure that that is possible. And I see councilmember Mueller's hand up, so I'll, I'm happy to let him speak and add into this.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, so on the childcare center, I think everybody supports child education. What I've been wrestling with as I look at the budget is the question of what's full cost recovery and what isn't? And if it's not full cost recovery, it's being, if it's being supplemented by taxpayer dollars in this current climate, what is the rationale for that? Because the question that will arise, and I'm not saying that I'm forecutting it right now, but I just want to have an intellectually honest conversation about the issues as we lay them out. So when you're looking at the childcare centers, how much is full cost recovery? How much isn't? How much is being supplemented by taxpayer dollars? What's the rationale for it, where it is? Is it both centers or just one? It looks like from the budget that there's quite a bit of taxpayer-dollar supplementation taking place. So understanding what that is and rationale in this, in this context, the people will ask the question, you know, one of the big issues about childcare in San Mateo County and on the peninsula, and why there's a lack of it, isn't because there's a lack of resources that wants to offer it, it's because there's a lack of property to do it. And the property that, in which we do it, will still be there. So the question then is, is it something that can be operated on a contract basis? Will be the question we're asked, that somehow they would have full cost recovery that we don't. And so, and if, because we can offer the property at almost no, no, no cost, we can give it to a childcare provider, much like we are doing over in, much like we're doing over near the park with the facility that we talked about earlier this year before COVID broke out, where it's like a $1 for the co-op rent. And so, you know, I'm not saying that I'm supporting getting rid of it at this time, but I think that I understand why staff put it on here so that we could have a discussion about all those issues, because there are a lot of private childcare providers that aren't being supplemented in a budget by a city of, by the tune of $3 million. And so if we're going to be doing that, we have a choice to make of, okay, we're going to leave it on the books, but we're going to bring full cost recovery to it, or we're going to supplement it for, you know, one group and on, or not another. Or we're going to, you know, how are we going to make this, make this center sustainable is really the question before us. And so, and that also being the case, when I look at it, I also, you know, you know, when we're breaking down those questions, well, I, you know, I digress there. Like, I understand, I understand the importance of childcare. I think we all agree on that. It's just a question of, and to be fair to everyone listening, you know, if everything right now, and I want to make this clear to folks, because we're, you know, talking about concessions and all these different things, this is 100% real. Like, every decision we make right now, we say we're going to supplement this $3 million bucks, means we're cutting something else, right? Or we figure out a way to bring, or we figure out a way. I mean, one of the big issues right now with childcare centers is, from a fiscal sustainability standpoint, is every day that they're not operational, people are not paying anymore. So people are not paying anymore for childcare, and we're not, we're not offering it via video. I mean, we could try to provide those services via video to folks and see if people will sign up for it. But we are paying every day for service that is not being utilized by anyone, and we don't know when it's coming back. And all of those dollars are compounding on top of each other. And if we choose to supplement that during this time period, means someone else is going to lose a job in order to supplement that so that we all feel like we're supporting childcare when we can't offer it to anyone. So all of those things, like, I care about all the same issues that you guys do. Like, I want, I don't want to be in this position at all. I've defended the Menlo, I've defended our childcare centers. I don't think it's a question before us tonight of whether or not we're defending the childcare centers. I think it's a question of how do we make it fiscally work for keeping them?
So, Mr. Pigaro had a, Mr. Pigaro had a follow-up to councilmember Mueller's comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do want to just clarify that the numbers that are reflected in the expenditure reductions are the, are the costs incurred by the program. There is additional, there is, of course, offsetting revenue in some cases. As councilmember Mueller just pointed out, the biggest challenge that we have right now is knowing when and how the programs will return and what, and how they will be subscribed, what the subscription will be. and what rate and and how they will be subscribed, what the subscription will be. And so those three uncertainties have caused us to include the cost, the full cost of the program in the event that the council wants to keep the program and we don't know, and we don't know exactly when it's coming back.
So you're saying it's probably not 3 million, that there's other funds that come in to supplement it?
Well, the, all the fees for, what he's saying is all the fees of the people who use it will come back. But my question is then, because here's the deal, and like if you look at other places throughout, throughout the world, COVID-19 happened, they pulled the kids, they lifted the shelter in place, 20% of the kids came back. And so the question is, will people who want to use this service put down deposits and commit that they're going to use the service when the shelter in place is lifted for those kids? Or are we going to supplement the service for an indefinite period of time when no one's using it and no one has a deposit to use it? Right? Like those are, those are the the factors that we have to weigh.
Have we done a survey and reached out to any of the parents to see what they think?
How many fewer, I have a question though before that. How many fewer children can come back? You said that there is a higher adult per child ratio, even if all of them wanted to come back, we couldn't take them back. So what is the 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 cut on the amount of children that we're, that we're allowed to take back with that new ratio?
Yeah, so council, so I know Mayor Taylor had a question. I'll answer, try to respond to that as well as Councilmember Carlton. So Councilmember Carlton, we know that right now the childcare standards COVID-19, and we're hoping that what will happen in stage two with the governor's order is that we would be able to offer childcare at that stage. The ratio is 12 to 2. We would probably never have one adult with children at any given time. So there would be two adults. So it would be a 12 to 2 ratio. What that equates to essentially is half of our enrollment at the CDC. With our current enrollment, we would literally have half of our enrollment at the CDC. At MCC, it would be approximately about the same thing. We would have 12 students per classroom and that for serving 36. And I believe we serve a little over 60 students right now. That's how we would do that. So we would definitely, we are going to be restricted by that. However, you know, as I think everybody indicated, there's lots of unknowns. Things are changing rapidly. We may find that we can enroll greater numbers. I will tell you that one of the questions you brought earlier is that the community services department has a reactivation plan. So that when, when we are called to deliver services, we are ready to do that and to respond and to provide those services. And so we are right now crunching the numbers with our budget. And what that would essentially mean, what what additional general fund impact would that be? If we're holding to the 12 to 2 ratio and we could only enroll 50% or so of our children? So, and so I can, I can do that. And then Mayor Taylor, you asked the question about surveying parents. We have set out a survey out to our parents and and the great thing is that a parent of two kids as well know how important it is to try to get childcare back again. Is that we have found out from parents, around 90% of our parents from MCC, at least we know, would be interested in the child coming back. But they are aware of our needs for, you know, meeting the requirements that the county health officer provides for us.
We might be turning people away then is what you're saying.
I mean, there is a potential for that. With the CDC right now, we don't start enrollment until the end of this year. So currently we're in a situation where we can maintain the existing participants, but we wouldn't be able to enroll new participants in CDC. MCC, we would have to figure out how that would work. And then, I'm sorry, Councilmember Mueller, you had, you had a question and I didn't.
It's okay. It's actually just procedural because I want to, I just, I want to ask the mayor through the, you know, and my colleagues. Tonight, we have, there's only four of us. And just as a general issue, it's sort of my, my belief that we would come back on this item next week when we have a fifth council member. So tonight we will, we'd be asking our questions and sort of give a general indication of the things of ways we're leaning, but we would want to have that fifth council member involved in making those decisions. And then, and then as a result of our discussions this evening, hopefully the unions would be able to sit down as well between now and next week and have a discussion after hearing the types of questions we're answering, we're asking this evening. So we can all try to get to a, an endpoint next week with our, with our, with our fifth council member. Does that seem like something that you guys agree with?
That's fair. I think that while the council needs to be present in decisions like these. And Vice Mayor Combs, I know you had your hand up a moment there, and I know your hands are full at this moment, but I'd love to hear what you have to say.
Totally fair. Thanks. So I, I just want to understand when we sort of look at the childcare deficits for the 2021. It is structured in the sense of that there are no fees being collected, but it, we are, we are paying, you know, for, for essentially fully staffed. So all of the staff are retained and no, no fees come in. And so when we get to this 1, 1.2 million, the 1.7 million, is that how that is structured? Right? And so for the entirety of 20, of the fiscal year 2021, no one pays any, any fees. But, but everyone is, is, is fully salaried who, who, who works, who work there. Correct?
Yeah, Councilmember Combs, the way I, the way the staff work reflects, it just covers the, it reflects the expenditures for the budget. So that would be correct. So assuming no revenues come in, that's what you would be looking at. That would be the general fund impact.
So I just, I, I think that that certainly is a, a, a the most dire of scenarios, right? And certainly I appreciate that that staff wants to make sure that, 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 you know, whatever direction council goes in, that it goes in clear eyed. But, but there would be sort of a way of which you could see of, like, one, not, i- 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 one, I, I think it is, i- it is again, a very dire scenario to think that over the entirety of the next fiscal year, that, that there would be no ability to offer childcare services. And two, that if you were sort of, if that looked like that that were the, where we were headed, that you couldn't have some, some sort of maintenance staff, right? That, you, you know, could then, you know, were key to this reactivation plan. But then wasn't everyone sort of, you know, who, who was employed? And so I would just say, like, I think again, like, I don't think it's unlike, I don't think it's likely that, that we would, we would be in a scenario where we're not going to see any kids enrolled over the entirety of the next fiscal year. And if that were the case, I think that you could do something short of eliminating the program that allows you to reduce those costs in a way that essentially allows the program to, to be, to ma- be maintained in, 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 on a footing where it could be, it could be reactivated. And so I think that that, that just would be the way that, as I look at that, that specific scenario, how, how I, I sort of look at it. So in normal scenarios, these are completely cost recovery, you know, programs. I know I don't think that, like, essentially there isn't like sort of line item out. And so they don't essentially, the city doesn't, you know, charge them a rent or anything like that. And I'm pretty sure there's lots of other services and stuff that the city doesn't sort of break out necessarily for, for these, these programs. But generally speaking, they are, they are cost recovery. And so I think that that's, it's, it's important to note, especially given all that we've heard tonight about the, the enormous benefit that they provide in, in, you know, in the community. And the other thing, I, I wanted to just, and I appreciate sort of the, the direction Council Mueller was taking us in as far as like, you know, this being a night of questions, especially since we're, we're short one council member. But, and again, this is a question to the mayor too, like, you know, exactly like, how should we possibly be approaching this? Because, you know, is there, you know, if we look at these, these different tiers, right? I mean, I imagine that when it comes to like table three, the unrepresented management personnel and cost reductions, you know, I think we could sort of say those things are fine, right? That, that we're not going to necessarily, we, we accept the staff's recommendation there. And even like, you know, I would want to understand from my, my colleagues on the council, when we get into like that table four, like, you know, within the tier one reductions, are, are those all like sort of things of which there would be limited or no, no disagreement? Because I do really want to get in the sense of like where as we, as staff has structured it, where do we start getting into these tables where, where there is going to be disagreement? And so certainly it is, I know table six is, 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 is probably things of which, you, you know, there, where we're talking about parking enforcement. But are there, as we look at some of those prior tables, are, are those things where, you know, there's a general consensus?
Thank you, Councilmember Combs. I, Mayor, I, I don't know if I should take more questions or I'll wait for you.
Thank you, Mr. Swaggart. So I just wanted to follow up on, on Vice Mayor Combs's comment. And as far as how to go through all of these tables, there's a lot here. I mean, it would take us quite some time to go through it one by one. I know that Councilmember Mueller had some questions and Mr. Swaggart wrote those down. Councilmember Carlton had questions as well. And so I, I believe that the best way is maybe just go down and take a note of all the questions from the council. And so that way, when we come back, that hopefully you, you would have enough time to provide the question, provide the answers for council as opposed to doing it now one by one in the council meeting. Mr. Swaggart, would that work for you?
Actually, since most of the items, I have a handful of items that are related to community services. We can definitely take all those questions. And then I will defer to my colleagues to help answer or take down the other questions on the other items.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Swaggart. Councilmember Carlton, did you still have a question or a comment?
Yeah. Just to clarify, this was being subsidized before all this happened. It, it's not being subsidized just because we're, we're paying for staff that aren't working. If these, if these staff are laid off, that's why I asked the question in the very beginning. We have the ability, assuming they don't go to work some, somewhere else, they would get unemployment and we would have the option of rehiring them. Because I, I think one of the speakers said the idea of, I forget the word that was used. It wasn't canceling the program, but the, the program itself isn't. Elimination. That sounds so frightening. Is this li- laying off the staff until we can rehire them, until the program can, can continue? Because elimination sounds like it's over and it's not coming back. I, I want to make sure that if the teachers who are not being used right now are laid off, that i- if it starts again in, whenever, we have the ability to rehire them.
By the way, Chris. I'd like to answer that question just a little bit, and then I, I know my boss there, Nick Pogaris, will jump in as well. And so regarding hiring, I think it's really important to know that it's not an automatic that you can turn around and hire folks in terms of the ability to do so. I will say that, and you did hear speakers mention that there is a dearth of childcare. There is high competition for childcare teachers. We have a couple vacancies in those programs now that we are trying, have been trying to fill. So it is a challenge. It's, we're competing for a small group of folks. So I just want to mention that it's not an automatic, you're gonna, you know, it's not, you're not going to flip the light switch and be able to get folks back right away. That being said, I'll turn it over to Nick who can speak specifics about that. Thanks.
Thank you, Derek. I, Councilmember Carlton, the, without regard to what programs are, are ultimately reduced to a council direction when you adopt the budget, all city, our labor contract with us, with SEIU allows for a two-year rehiring. So if you're laid off, you're eligible for rehire within two years. Now that said, folks clearly can get other jobs. To Councilmember or to Vice Mayor Combs' point, the question is, can we create a situation where we effectively mothball or we secure, put the program in a sort of a stasis mode where when things are ready to come back, we can? I mean, that's something that we can work on. I do want to point out just one final thing for the council is that the survey that was done with parents did not ask about their interest or their willingness to pay additional fees and leave. And, and due to the social distancing, if we're reducing, or if we're increasing the number of staff per child, that would affect considerably the cost for service, which of course the council could decide to subsidize. But with that said, that would add to the budget challenge that we're, that we're currently facing.
I, I just wanted to follow up on that. We, we talk about, oh, we're using tax dollars to subsidize preschool. We use tax dollars to, to pay for school. And shout out to, to Joe Semidion. Years ago, I worked with him on a, on some education bills. And he had the idea that public schools should extend into preschool because of the importance, because of the high impact on people's ability to work, on the education, on the preparation for school. I really wish we would, we would find a way to, to loop that in, but that's for a later date. But I, I bring that as to the importance of this. We are, this is not something we're just subsidizing. This is investing in our children and our community. And I just think it's, it's critically important. I'm just looking down at my notes. I have no problem if we bring this out to someone that can, someone else that can run it in the same way that someone else runs our, our swim. You know, there, there are various other things that we have contracted out. I do want to make sure that it stays affordable. The problem with economics is that things being rare, and we've established that, that we need more childcare. When things are rare, they tend to cost more. And then you have an equity problem. And I want to make sure that people have the ability to go to work. And that we, we, if, if we do have this go out, I want to make sure that we have it go out in a way that still provides an affordable solution for people to have a safe place for their children.
Councilmember Mueller.
Just as a, as a budgeting exercise, back to what Councilmember Combs has said. So I am, the way I'm looking at what we're doing tonight is we would look at those tables. And so I think that what Councilmember Combs was saying was right. So for instance, based on the information that we have already, table four and table five, you know, based on information we have today, that we are, if we were in a meeting next week, I'd be inclined say, okay, well, based on what staff's recommended, that gets us to our number. Table six, I think, requires a more in-depth discussion with our, with our colleagues on. And then I think we go through it the same way, table six and table seven, and then table eight. But the idea is, like, when we do these discussions about what's important, that we, we keep in mind the trade-offs on all of those. So we get to the, to the number that we need to get to, because this is going to be incredibly painful. So, and then there was one thing I did just have a question. And, you know, the children's center, like we, we can come back to that. Like I see, I see the argument on both sides. What I'm just trying to figure out is, okay, like, how do we make it work? Right? Like, you mean, it's a, you know, the question is, okay, if we're going to do it, if we're going to keep it, how do we make it work for the time period? And how long of a period of time do we subsidize it where it's not providing services? That we continue to do that because we're cutting something else to do that? So, but if, if, if it's important to people that we do that, then, then we find the money somewhere else in the budget. And so we keep track of the number. I did want to just say, there was a question about the, about this report I wanted to ask. And that was, in terms of revenues, you know, I asked the city manager today. We had bought a property from, we had bought a property, if I remember correctly, that was worth a considerable amount of money along Willow Road when the economy was good before this all broke out. We did actually buy it. And so when we bought that, we thought, well, we will own it, we'll let the fire district use it. And it was kind of like, they wanted to buy at the same time, but was someone going to buy it? Well, the fire district actually has a different, a different funding mechanism than we do based on property taxes, and they have pretty considerable surpluses. based on property taxes, and they have pretty considerable surpluses. And we sell that property to the fire district. That's a big chunk of money coming back into our budget that we could potentially use for this. So I wanted to know if that's been explored. Is it something that we could talk to them about doing? Because that, that helps. I am curious, for instance, and Star, I'm just going to finish, and then I'll love to hear your thoughts. I am interested, one of the things that we haven't talked about, for instance, with the childcare centers, can some of those people be? There are a lot of parents who are wonderful parents, who are having a hard time working and being parents. And the video childcare or video babysitting is starting to catch on, where people are hiring people to entertain their kids and be with them via the internet. And so I'm curious if we've looked at any sort of revenue streams, put people back to work like that. And then the other, I'm just kind of curious, you know, what sort of outside-the-box revenue generation things have we thought about to shore this up? Because every single one of those little pieces adds up. And the fire, the fire district property, it could really, you know, really had a, another idea I had, and this is kind of a crazy concept, and God help me, if people light me up, I'm just suggesting it as an option, and I don't even know what it would look like. So please, people, just go with me, because I'm just an outside-the-box thing, is do we want at this time explore selling development rights on upzoning in certain areas of the city that we already planned to upzone? So, which is something.
As it's not in District One?
Well, I'm, like I said, I'm just, I didn't suggest it was in District One. What I'm doing is presenting a concept that was discussed in prior, and unfortunately, in District One, a lot of that area has already been upzoned. I'm talking about areas that haven't been upzoned by Ray, that we could go ahead and then look at, that you could, that we would get revenue from by providing that economic potential. And some of those areas, we're already probably looking at upzoning them anyway. So that's outside the box, another outside-the-box thinking. But when we talked about development rights in the past and different plans, there was a question of, do you upzone and then take it back in public benefit? Or you do you just sell the upzoning rights? And it may be that this isn't a bad idea at this time period in some areas to shore up. I don't know if that works or not. But it's an idea. I'm not, I am not advocating that we do that now. What I'm trying to do is put ideas out there to be discussed. So one of them is that, one of them is sell the Willow property to the fire district. One of them is take services that we've offered in place and make them and offer them virtually, specifically around kids for a fee. Because so, now with that, I'll pass it to Mr. Ron Robinson.
Thank you. So I was really just going to comment on selling the Willow Ivy property to the fire district. I think the council's direction to us was to look into that and proceed. We just have, and I think there are a number of opportunities to partner with the fire district, and we look forward to those discussions. That process got interrupted by COVID-19, but we can certainly try to, once we're through with the budget process, we can certainly reach out to the fire department and have some initial discussions right now. But in terms of, yeah, yeah, we'll certainly talk to them. But I believe we're all interested, at least when last we discussed this, my understanding was the council supported selling the property and the district supported purchasing the property. Just a few other partnership issues we want to work on in conjunction with that.
So if that's the case, what would, what, like, if that's the case where it seems like there's a meeting of the minds on that, then understanding what the estimate of revenue inflow is at is important in balancing the budget for this fiscal year. I mean, so having a discussion like that to inform us next week, you know, I mean, candidly, I would expect it to be what we bought it for, right? I mean.
Right, right, yeah. I think that's the, that's the transaction we've talked about with them before, just, I mean, we're both tax-supported agencies, we're not trying to profit from this one way or the other. So, yeah, we can, we can bring that back next week.
I'm happy to profit from it.
Okay, well, we're happy to profit from it, too.
No, I'm, I'm going to wrap up. I have, I have a bunch of other questions that go into the minutia of streets. And basically, just to sum it up, making sure that we don't save a penny now to spend a dollar later. But I'll sum it up in this. Two, two deal breakers. One is they talk about eliminate non-emergency phone and increase 911 answer times. No, nope, no, no, no. If my husband's on the floor and he has a heart attack, and every second counts to get someone there to help him. If someone's breaking in someone's house, 911 is 911, and I won't do anything to increase answer times because that's an emergency. And we have a moral and ethical responsibility for making sure that people get help as quickly and efficiently as possible. That's one. The other is I won't, I will not vote to eliminate the childcare, childcare center. And as I've said, I'm happy to be creative, I'm happy to talk about selling things. But those, those two things are a no-go for me. That's, that's, and I know we're asking questions, and now you go away and talk to the unions and talk to the different people, and we figure out how to make this balance. But I'm just sharing that with you. I cannot eliminate the childcare center, and I cannot increase 911 answer times. Those are the two deal breakers. Everything else, we can talk about the details.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. I appreciate you saying that. I share the same sentiment when it comes to the Child Development Center. I think there's a piece that hasn't been discussed, is the reason why it exists, to buy, to provide access to high-quality education to children in an area that's been underserved. The Big Lift supports it and also a fund from the state. So it's not like the city is supplementing 100%. I think it's less than that. So if Mr. Swaggart, next week, if you could provide us some type of detailed budget as to how much money comes from Measure A, how much money comes from the state, and how much money actually comes from the city, that that would help us to make a better-informed decision.
And thank you to Ray for his creative ideas. I'd love, I'd love to look into those further.
So I'm, and I just wanted to ask guys, because I'm not advocating that we get rid of the center, but I am trying to understand what you guys are saying. Are you saying that, because earlier there was talk about, earlier there was talk about whether or not that, well, I guess I'm saying from a budget perspective, I don't understand what you guys are saying, because I don't think any of us wanted to eliminate the center. Like, no one wants to eliminate the center. And, and the question, I've heard different variations in the discussion of whether or not that means that we're going to potentially contract it out, we're potentially going to freeze it and put it in stasis, then bring it back when COVID-19 is over, which would mean eliminating people and then bringing them back. Would be, and then there's a third option of just, just us keeping everybody on the payroll. Like, so all I'm trying to fund, and I'm not trying to, what I'm trying to figure out, because I don't think any of us wants to get rid of that center permanently. But from a budget perspective for staff, what are we saying? Are we saying that we just, we're going to figure out a way to keep it, but we don't know how yet? Or, like, I just don't, I agree, I don't want to get rid of it. So what does that mean?
This is a great place for the, as far as I'm concerned, for the emergency funds. We need to be investing in our children instead of eliminating services for them. And I feel the same thing about library. So I think we need to look elsewhere, we need to look elsewhere. I think there's other places in the budget where we can find whatever the amount that the children is pulling from our budget that has earned them a spot on the list to be eliminated. We need to find something else.
I understand, Cecily, but my question is, are you advocating then that we should take money from the emergency funds to sustain it? That is, for the time period that it's not delivering services to people, which is fine. I just don't know what you're, what's.
Well, can I, I just chime in? I mean, I think, Ray, part of like how you make or can make that decision is like, what figure are we looking at? Are we looking at 1.2 million or altogether like 3 million? Like, sustaining it and not having any revenue? I don't think anyone, or certainly I wouldn't, you know, sign up for that. That, you know, for me is concerning. But I don't think that, like, that's the the real number. I think the number is some somewhere north of that. And so, yeah, so there is a number somewhere north of that, where I would be willing to sort of, you know, invest in making sure that that the the program is there and able to to be reactivated at some point. I'm not opposed to having a conversation about whether, long-term, you know, this is something that the city could look for, a childcare service providing sort of subject matter expert or a company that that does that. I don't know, though, like, how we have that discussion now, right? At this moment, I think the discussion is, is like, how this service can can continue, right? Or be reactivated and under what auspices? And then, yeah, maybe we sort of say that at some point, let's have a discussion whether whether it's possible to 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 move these, these services to some sort of contract, you know, some contract provider. I just don't think you can have that that conversation now.
So I'm not, I'm not trying to be difficult at all in this, guys, but what I, but what we do have to do now, and not tonight, but what we do have to do before June 1st, is approve a budget for how long that we are willing and under what, and under what circumstances to go ahead and provide money for this purpose. And under, and, and so if that's, the council wants to say, okay, for this purpose, for this childcare center, we are going to go ahead and continue to budget as is for this many months without, and during that time period, we potentially will contract, you know, we won't, but this is what the priority is, then that's fine. But what I'm saying is, between now and coming out of next week for staff, and so that we have a completed budget, we have to know how much we're allocating toward that so we know how the rest of the budget is affected.
Well, I guess a good question is, do we have to return any of the funds that we've received from the state and from Big Lift?
But it's not, but we're not talking about this fiscal year, we're talking about next fiscal year. So will we get funds to provide services for kids who aren't enrolled at the start of the year? And we don't know when they're coming back?
If, if, to answer the, I think the question, if you're talking about, you know, do we continue to pay the the teachers, I think that goes across the board. Yeah, we might have to lay people off. I want to make sure that that we can rehire them. I don't want to lay off anyone, and we privately had this conversation. I don't want to lay off anyone. I wish we could negotiate something where, I don't know, maybe they, the, everyone takes a pay cut to be able to to keep people. I don't know how we negotiate that through, that's for another conversation in another place. But we may have to lay people off. But in doing so, I want to make sure that we do so in a way that we can rehire them, if if it's deemed necessary.
Okay, so just from a.
Because remember, we don't know when we're able, legally able to open it up again, and I give you that.
Okay, so what, I guess, and I'm not, again, I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just saying, from a numbers perspective right now, as we look at the budget and moving into the other tables, is it anywhere between like $0 to the fourth, to the full 3 million that we might be supplementing to the next fiscal year? Because that's money we got to find somewhere else. Or is there some lesser amount that's in everybody's mind that's what's acceptable? And that's, I'm not, like, I'm not trying to put people on the spot. I'm just from a budget perspective, trying to figure out, okay, like, where do I have to find the money elsewhere in the budget to get us to the end point? That's all.
Yeah, can I just chime in, Councilmember Mueller? I think that's, yeah, that that's a completely fair and perfect way to 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 frame it. And I, for me, what I would be looking for is, is some feedback from staff saying that, like, this is, you know, either sort of, sort of maintaining something that would allow it to most seamlessly be reactivated is is not possible under 3 million. And then, and then that's a decision, right? And we can have that decision. But if, what I would also want from staff is to, if there is some, some, again, some figure north of 3 million for the two, two centers over, over the course of 2021, then I want to see that and how that looks. And of course, you know, again, that would, you know, certainly include personnel savings when, when, again, that that personnel is not being, or not being used. But again, I don't disagree, you're, you're, you're certainly framing it in the exact way I think it needs to be framed.
Okay, yeah, because the, because the way I see it right now is that, just from a budget perspective, that was in one of the tables, that was a coawfler, right, table? But assuming all of those things, like, so there's 3 million that potentially is coming out of the Economic Stability Fund. And, you know, last week, staff was like, well, we'll take four from there. And we were like, I don't know. But now we just, we pulled three, and we haven't even started looking at all the rest of the tables. So, and everything we go through is going to have, so going to have, you know, public policy of why. And really good, strong, and I don't disagree with you guys, like, this is really, there are really good reasons why. But, but, so from a numbers perspective, though, I think there, I think staff is going to come and be asking us to make some tough policy decisions.
So some of, one of the interesting things about finance and accounting is the assumptions. And they say, some, what if, some staff members started teasing me that the devil in the details is, I say often in these things, and it's true. The devil in the details of a lot of accounting is the assumptions, always look at the assumptions. And so they're necessary. So when the staff, when we talk about this and we find a way to make this work, you have to assume stage two. Stage two is when restaurants open up, when we're able to to serve tables. When, you know, stage two is coming. So maybe we make an assumption when stage two might be, like, September, whenever we can make educated, because there are a lot of assumption in here. There are a lot of, we think this is going to happen, best case, worst case. And so I look forward to receiving from staff when they think stage two might be. And then we go from there with the numbers. But I, I think that I'm, it's doable. And I think rather than beat this further, I think staff has definitely got direction.
So with that in mind, Madam Mayor, if it's okay, can I just summarize a little bit here?
Yes.
So. I appreciate the very heartfelt policy discussion on childcare. And I think we understand more or less where you all stand on that. So maybe not in completely, in complete unison, but we get the high-level notes on that. So I think what we could try and do is put together another set of recommendations for you that would encompass table two A, the reductions in table two A, the reductions in table three, reductions in table four, and then include in addition, another 3 million, which could be from the proposed sale of the Willow Ivy property and/or a reduction in the capital improvement transfer from the general fund, and maybe part of a sale, part of the cost of the sale of the Willow Ivy property, and then $4 million in reserves. And that cumulative total is somewhere in the $13 million range, plus or minus. And maybe if we bring that back to you for a focused discussion next Tuesday night, based on what we've heard tonight, that will be helpful. And, and we can bring you more detail on the childcare costs in that discussion, although those would not be in the recommendations.
Can you say the last part again, Stala?
Oh, that the, we can bring you more detailed information about the childcare programs, although those wouldn't, those recommendations are not included in the tables that I previously mentioned.
Okay, and so it would have a break, it would have a breakdown of the funds that come from the state and the funds that come from Big Lift?
Currently, yeah.
Because I, I don't have a clear understanding of Title V. I don't have to learn that right now at the council meeting, I could look that up. But I know that's a part of how the funding is done for the Child Development Center. And I'm not sure for both, though.
No, no, Title V only is, only funds the CDC. No, what I'm saying is that we'll bring you back more detailed information about childcare, but that, based on tonight's discussion, would not necessarily be in the set of recommendations we bring back next week, just more information.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, so guys, are you, I mean, so we've gone from the childcare center now to not even having a discussion about any of the other tables and using the full 4 million plus the 3 million from Willow? Like, how do we get there?
Well.
I don't understand.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, I just don't understand, like, we haven't gone, I mean, we should. we should talk about the other tables and what's in them before we talk about. I mean, the $3 million that I thought from Willow would be like, OK, we don't have to take the 4 million from reserves. It wasn't 3 million from Willow plus all the reserve, plus the 4 million from reserves. It was like getting us back to where we were last week with staff's recommendations. I mean, in essence, if we sell Willow and we use 4 million from reserves, we might as well just tell the city we're supplementing the budget by 7 million bucks instead of the before that was recommended last week.
I have a question for Ms. Herring. Do we still have a public comment?
Let me see if she is still on. No, it looks like she has disconnected from the meeting.
OK, thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Combs, did you have a question or a comment?
No, I I want to make sure sort of I understand, again, the the city manager's direction regarding sort of the next meeting for the more focused discussion. So then I can can make sure I'm understanding the point that Councilmember Mueller is raising. So if 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 the city manager could, again, just reiterate to me going forward, what of the tables you believe are are on the table and and off the table? Like, so is it, does it stop at, you know, so there's all the the tier one tables? Is that all stuff that you're saying would would come back for for discussion? Are all of the tier one tables from one through five? I just, again, like I said, I want to make sure I understand what's the next direction?
So, well, I was just trying to summarize where I thought the council was. And I needed clarity about the intention of the use of the proceeds from selling the Willow Ivy property. So I stand corrected on that. The intention, as I now understand it, was to use those dollars in lieu of the economic stabilization fund. So so that that takes $3 million out of my summary. But I was proposing we would bring back table two A, which is a summary of table two, table three, which is unrepresented management cuts, and then table four, which is the low impact on citywide equity tier one reductions. But that's just what I thought I I got out of the council's discussion. So if that's not the direction, then please, please let me know that.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, so I can't speak for all you guys, but and and I can't even say it. So it seems to me that it's just a quick conclusion. That's all. It's like, we haven't even discussed the other tables yet and gone through what cuts make sense. As so it seems like a quick conclusion. It's like, well, we found 3 million bucks, and we can use the 4 million from here, so we don't have to do all of this. But it seems to me that our fiduciary responsibility is to go through all of these things in the table and determine which ones, you know, like, it's from, so I'll be candid. Like, for me, I'm looking at, you know, in the last recession, which was nowhere near what we have now. You know, we didn't have a traffic. We didn't have a traffic. We got rid of the traffic unit, right? And so, like, so I'm like, OK, well, that's something that the city went away in much, in a situation much less dire than this. Now, we can have a policy discussion and say, well, we don't want to do that. But we probably need to have the policy discussion because precedent is that's what happened last time. So we need to show people we we discussed it. Like, I just don't think that the quick and easy is to say, OK, we got the 4 million. We're going to take 4 million from the reserve plus 3 million from the sale and not go through all of this process. And maybe we do it, we do it next time with Councilmember Nash. But but I like, I know for myself, to take a vote on this budget, I'm going to need to go through these things and talk about them in detail about what we're keeping and what we're not. And I don't want, and I certainly don't want our stakeholders who are involved in this process to think that last week, you know, there was discussion of four, and now we found seven. So, you know, like, I think that we really, I don't, I just don't think that's the, I'm not even sure the council will do this next week. I don't think that's the proper, the the right message to be sending this evening.
Counsel, Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, were you you going to say something?
I actually was going to call Starla back, but I'll wait.
Yeah, I think sort of along the lines of what Councilmember Mueller was pointing out, like, I saw some of those tables that the city manager referenced as a sort of, you know, items we could move off, and they were sort of low hanging fruit, and that we would accept that those reductions would take place. And that they going forward that, you know, our discussion would be on, on, you know, having policy discussions around some of those, those, you know, again, more citywide impacts. Again, like, if we look at table five, like, you know, the long range planning projects, $600,000. Like, I, you know, I think that that should be part of the discussion. Reduced capacity in transportation division, essentially $300,000. Again, and this is table five, so things that in theory weren't going to come back. I think that, you know, should certainly be a part of the the discussion. You know, reducing main library open hours, here it's 25%. Maybe that is a bridge too far for me, but is there some some reduction in in hours that that does seem right? And so, again, I wouldn't necessarily want to remove that. Reduce, you know, book e resource budget, 75%. Again, that seems like to me something I would possibly want to want to look at. I'm not trying to, you know, I know staff needs to begin to funnel this and hone this a little bit. And I certainly understand that. But 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 for me, I think, again, some of those, 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 those initial or those first tables, you know, I would just accept as like, you know, reductions that will be made. And then we're we look at the other tables for things of which we want to have policy discussions about.
Mr. Figaro?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To for the council, the way the staff report is structured is it shows incremental progress towards the $12.7 million revenue shortfall. And so if I'm hearing the council correctly, and we're, and there is some comfort level with with the reductions that were identified in table two, three, and four, the budget deficit that we're really focusing on now is 6.9 million approximately. And that 6.9 million, the way the the tables are formatted is you can go down through those, everything after table, table four, and take the reductions that you see appropriate. And at, you know, decide at what point you're going to say, OK, we've taken enough reductions. Maybe we will use one time monies from the sale of land, or we may use one time monies from the, from economic stabilization reserve. So I think that for next Tuesday, if I'm hearing the council correctly, the the sort of the nut that we need to crack next week is the difference between table four and the tables two, three, and four, and then the 12.7 million, which is about $6.9 million.
Can you also include any of those items on those table, in the tables that are revenue generating? Yes, some of these generate revenue.
Yes, yes, Madam Mayor. There is a, there is offsetting revenue. I think one of the challenges to the earlier conversations that the council was having, that the council had is in relation to what are the assumptions of those revenue services returning? And we will, we will provide our, the revenue assumptions that are the assumptions that we are using. And the council can decide to go more conservative or less conservative on that. But the full picture, for example, for the CDC is it's the number that's in the report. And, you know, we can talk about those assumptions next week, and we'll definitely provide those for you.
OK, thank you, Mr. Figaro. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, and one quick shortfall. And and this, the 12 million shortfall for 2021, does that also include sort of like some of the CIP items that we were discussing? Or have you guys, has that been set in staff's mind? Like, you know, the CIP priorities? Or is there still some some X factors there, like revenue to or monies that can be, can be moved over from from those projects back to the general, general fund?
Yes, to answer your question, Vice Mayor Combs, the the use of one time money table includes two references to the capital improvement program. One is potential repatriation, and the other is reduction or skipping the reserve or the transfer. Thank you.
Starla, I have a question is for the meeting that we have not scheduled for this item to continue to. Can this please be the only item on the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I think one of the big challenges is that we haven't determined, based on where we are today, what services we're going to provide as a city. So just thinking about the future or the near future, short term future, what will exist and what will not? And so that's a challenge to do. So at any rate, it will be helpful to have this as the only agenda item so that we can dive into it a little bit more and go line by line, since this is not the only item on our agenda. So at this time, do we need to, is there any other comments from council, any other questions? And if we have any follow up questions for staff, we could always email staff, and they can provide it in the staff report for next week.
Yes, we can try. We are going to schedule, hopefully, we'll be checking the council's schedule, but I think we're targeting next Tuesday, which means we really only have two plus days to get the agenda report done. So not a lot of time to, it's not a lot of turnaround time.
So if we have them emailed to you no later than tomorrow, would that be sufficient?
We'll try and answer all the questions, yes.
OK, thank you.
So, well, I just, just in terms of feedback from the council. So would you like us to put together our best recommendations for closing the $12.7 million gap, recognizing that the council wants to spend no more than a maximum of $4 million from reserves slash sale of Ivy Willow property?
I mean, you know, my last thinking on this was a balanced budget. So in and so, but you're seeing, and and that was, so you're seeing a balanced budget achieved in part with Ivy Willow, correct? Or are we seeing
I'm saying, I'm saying use of one time money, whether that's from reserves or Ivy Willow. So no more than $4 million total for use of reserves or one time money. Although the council hasn't, it would be helpful if we had some feedback on your thoughts on the CIP. Like, there are two, we could reduce the transfer from general fund to the CIP, or we could repatriate money that had been funded, had been in projects, funded projects before, and we could eliminate those projects or reduce them and then return that to the general fund for use for fiscal year 2021. And that's on So that's on page E114.
Councilmember Mueller?
I'm just going to defer discussion on the CIP to Councilmembers Nash and Ash here, because I just know she's going to have, she's going to have input and thoughts on the CIP, so.
I do have a question about the general, general fund unassigned fund balance. It's unassigned funds. We're using 1 million of 2.1 million. We're leaving the other million just in case something comes up? Or what's happening to that other million there?
Yeah, we're leaving it there in case something comes up or it's needed in a future year based on further COVID-19 revenue losses.
In addition to the economic stabilization?
Correct.
Yeah, I agree. I'd like to, I'd like, I have a billion more questions, and I'll send you an email. But I also feel more comfortable getting into the minutia when Councilmember Nash is here as well.
I agree. Are there any other questions or follow up comments on this item on E1?
Madam Mayor, can I, just to make sure that we're following council direction. So tonight's direction is not to make any final decisions about program eliminations and therefore layoff notices.
Correct, until we have the full council.
Right, OK, just just confirm me.
Thank you.
And just following up on that, so does that, because I know there's a certain timeline as if for, if we're talking about layoff notices and for those layoffs to take effect this fiscal year, when do, and maybe you said this and I missed it, when do those notices need to go out for it to be contained within this fiscal year?
Friday. May 15.
This Friday.
Right, this Friday.
So No, please go.
If we, if it's sent out a week later, it just means it goes a week into July. So it's, it's not like, it just delays it by the week or however long it takes us to get that direction.
Just to clarify, when when we give that notice, there's a 45 day period that we can rescind that decision, though, correct?
There's a 45 day minimum requirement of notice to the employee, and the council can rescind that offer or rescind the layoff notice at any time.
Are we continuing negotiations with the the unions so that possibly something can be agreed that wouldn't require some of the layoffs?
We are talking to the unions on a weekly basis, but they all have closed contracts right now. So there's, there's, they're not required to entertain those discussions legally.
But I'm just saying, if 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 they would like to work with us to not lay people off, they have the opportunity to meet with us. Is that correct?
We are meeting with them.
OK, good, thank you.
There aren't any more questions or comments on item E1. We will move to item E2. Update the city council on COVID-19 health emergency and the city's response. To introduce this item is our city manager, Starla Jerome Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to report out two items that happened this this past week. We amended the current order to allow the reopening of Bedwell Bayfront Park. We've reduced the available parking just to keep the crowds in check. But this past weekend, we found that everybody was very accommodating. People wore their masks and kept social distancing. So kudos to that. And I just want to make sure that the public is aware that we have also reopened City Hall on a limited basis. We are taking planning appointments We are taking planning appointments by, planning applications by appointment. Again, we're being very conscientious about social distancing and sanitation, but we are happy, well, those of us who are able to go to City Hall are happy to be back in City Hall and available to our customers. So, but now I think I'll turn it over to Councilmember Mueller for him to discuss his colleague's memo on closing down Santa Cruz.
Thank you. So I think you guys have seen the memo. We talked about this all the way back on, on April 7th, when there was public comment that evening from regarding Cafe Zoe and the, the request to go ahead and put parking, to recapture parking in front of Cafe Zoe. That evening, I shared with you guys the intent to bring this before you that we would close the downtown to go ahead and allow for social distancing along Santa Cruz Avenue and the street there. Met with Councilmember Nash afterwards. And as explained in the, in the referral, also have heard from, so I've heard from restaurant owners. I've heard from at least two different occasions from members of the public who reached out and said they thought this should be something we're doing. One put it on Nextdoor. There was, I think, you know, over 100 responses, positive responses from people saying, yeah, it should be done. So we brought this idea forward to you guys to see what you guys thought of it. Since we've, since bringing it forward and writing the referral, did have reach out from a few stakeholders who said that they were interested in an option that hadn't, candidly hadn't considered. And that option was to go ahead and cross streets on Santa Cruz rather than close them to leave some of them open. So you would have Santa Cruz Avenue going closed, cross street, closed, cross street. But that being said, I've also heard from, I've also heard from business and restaurant owners, representatives, the representatives on side streets who've said, we're not going to be able to enjoy the benefit of this. Can you provide us with some space so that we would be able to do this as well? And so that's like on the street with Carpatio and Refuge, you'd see that the outlet of Santa Cruz going to the start of that, that parking lot so that those side businesses could go ahead and move their social distance seat into that area. So that's the first component is Santa Cruz Avenue. The second component of the referral talks about throughout other parts of the city, you would have the ability through this, the city manager would have the ability through their, her special powers under the emergency resolution to grant people permits to recapture parking in their parking lots. So imagine when you come up Willow Road, you have Mardinis on the left. They would be able to actually, through a process set up by the city, be able to capture some of that outside space and put seating there. Or in the instance of like Cafe Zoe, Cafe Zoe, because it's not, it's off-street parking in front of it. It's not on-street. She'd be able to capture that through that permit process and be able to put parking there. The important thing about all of these things, both the Santa Cruz Avenue and this other component of off-street parking, is that they're all done under the emergency powers of the city manager under that resolution. So they'd be in place while the city manager has that ability. It's not on a permanent basis. So these would be, these would be temporary installations. And basically, it's so that we can go ahead and, you know, what I, you know, I'm not going to out this one restaurant, but they basically called me and said, I'm going to be out of business by December. And with the increased, unless I get increased capacity, once you guys, once you open this back up, if I don't have increased capacity to have my business be able to operate at the level that we had penciled when we did the finance, we're not going to make it. I actually even have one restaurant owner in unincorporated county who is like, who is just working with me to try to get the county to do something for them because it's unbelievable, it's very frustrating to them that Downtown Menlo Park's going to offer this to restaurants and businesses in Downtown Menlo Park to help them, but they won't be able to enjoy this in, in unincorporated. The last component that I think I talked about is that what was contemplated in the downtown section was that it would go into effect as soon as, as is practicable. So, and what that meant was it was going to provide time for staff to go ahead and try to figure out how to shut that downtown. And also, there's planning that needs to go in to figuring out what spaces are allotted to different areas. So they would go ahead and do that. I did not, we did not write immediately because there's a planning process that needs to be done by staff before they do this. So it's, it's practical. It's when does this make sense, especially in combination with the shelter in place? So the shelter in place, right now the thinking is that they probably will start to, I know that I didn't hear what the governor said today, but the thinking was that they might not allow restaurants to open until June 1st, was what the prior thinking had been. So there's time for staff to go ahead and figure this out. And even then, there's going to be specific precautions that are going to be required for that to happen. And so that's why the, the direction to provide staff is to go ahead and put in place the procedure upon which to do this. So that way staff can say, you know, I can't give you a permit unless I know you're following these or I can't, to these steps, basically. So there's a lot of planning that still would need to go into this in terms of how we make, how we make it, how we make it work. But the overarching theme of this is that our downtown business owners and restaurant owners need help. And, and I know there was that Menlo Future email that came out last night. I ended up speaking with the author of it last evening, and there was just a fundamental misunderstanding that, that businesses actually, well, this was to help businesses and wanting it, and it wasn't like an anti-car-driving thing. So, so long story short, there's a fourth option on the table this evening, which would be to allow for those cross streets, either all the way along Santa Cruz or in certain areas, to allow for, to allow for parking and also ease of crossing the downtown. But, but I think that, I mean, candidly, I, I think this is something that's going to help our business owners tremendously as the shelter in place order is lifted to get that capacity back. So if you guys have any questions for me on it, my expectation is there's a lot of people who are going to have comments on it this evening.
Yes, would we like to take public comment first? Okay, Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, I'm going to ask members of the public to use the hand feature in the right side of their screen. Do you have a public comment on E2? Which is the update to the city council and public on COVID-19 health emergency and the city's response. And at this time, our first public comment is from Greg Conlin. Greg, your mic is unmuted and you are able to address the city council.
Thank you very much. I had great empathy for your last two-hour discussion. I'm a CPA all my life and I understand the problems of getting the balances budgeted. So you're, you're, you're doing your job and I applaud you for doing it. And I, I spoke to the board of supervisors at the county the last two Tuesday mornings. And our, my message is that they need to open up the market at least to where the governor is. Because the governor is trying to get things done. I don't know what happened today on Leon Musk, but I know that that's going to be an issue that may crack up the six counties. Because if one county opens it up and the other six or the other five don't, then it's going to be a problem. But anyway, we felt that the least the county should do is open it up to equal what the governor wants. So I applaud you for going ahead and trying to work out something with the restaurants in the Menlo Park area. And I, you know, we've got almost 50,000 people unemployed in San Mateo County, and a lot of them are in the restaurant business. So I just, you can't do enough to fill that need. It's, it's, it's just unbelievable, the numbers. And, you know, we've got 20,000 small businesses that laid those people off and between the two of them, the businesses may not make it and the employees, they may not make it after, after their $600 a week expires. So we'll just see what happens. But I, I just want to come and applaud you for what you're doing and, and how you're doing it. And, you know, I, hopefully you'll get some sales tax money out of it for your own benefit. And, and I'm sure that all the people who get their jobs back will appreciate what you've done very much. So I don't think I need to say anymore and I want to thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you so much, Mr. Conlin. At this time, our next public comment comes from Fran Dean. Fran, I have unmuted you. If you'd like to unmute your mic, you can address the city council.
Great, thank you very much. Chambers sent out a short survey on the proposed closure for Santa Cruz Avenue to traffic, and we only included three questions. They were each open-ended because we wanted to encourage information guidelines creativity, if implemented by your actions this evening. The question was, were, how do you, how would this help your business open? What ideas do you have for safely serving restaurant patrons? And what further suggestions do you have for council to consider in reopening businesses? The survey went live at noon yesterday and we received responses from a mix of business owners, property owners and patrons. Over 90% of the respondents are business owners. 13% own or operate restaurants out of that grouping. And 11% operate businesses adjacent to Santa Cruz Avenue. And although we did not ask a question, do you favor or not favor? Still, we got great responses. Over 80%, or excuse me, over 50% of the respondents found merit or were not opposed to the pilot. Again, we didn't ask them that specifically. Over 80% of the responses stressed safety, the need to follow CDC and county guidelines for social distancing, sanitation and the use of masks. There were some suggestions, a lot of suggestions, but the ones that really bubble up to the top, implement as a pilot only, that with an end date established when it goes into implementation. Create a traffic plan for cars and bikes on the auxiliary streets. And again, this is the understanding that Santa Cruz Avenue would be closed to cars, bicycles, e-bikes, scooters, electric scooters. Use sidewalks, some favored using sidewalks for expansion, not the full street closure. And also some suggested using segments of parking plazas to keep the streets open. Very, very important. Many people said establish a pedestrian walk zone for safety so that they have social distancing from the restaurants serving in the streets and address our homeless issue along Santa Cruz Avenue. Concerns or reasons for opposition included that the proposal eliminates curbside delivery, takeout, handicapped access. All businesses don't necessarily have a parking plaza customer access. And many asked that a retail customer pickup zone should be created in the parking plazas along with this. Businesses, including offices, are anxious to open, be part of the plan as permitted by state detailed guidelines need to be established so both the merchants and patrons are safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran.
And at this time, I see no more public comment. No more hands raised. There, you may continue, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And Ms. Dean, I hope that you can email us that information you shared with us or at least provide it to the city manager, please. Great survey.
Yeah, and I would just say to my colleagues, the direction to staff could be to make sure to implement those things that were the concerns in the survey and the construction of the plan. So.
Are there any questions or comments from the council? Vice Mayor Combs?
So my first questions are related to process. So what, like, what are we looking for from the council? What does the city manager or the emergency services director, what is she looking for specifically? Just, just so I can sort of know how to, to calibrate my, my responses or, or, you know, how they fit into this, this larger picture.
So my understanding is that under the order, the city manager has the, would have the ability to do this under the mitigation, mitigation section of the order. So we could provide her director's direction similarly as we provided it when we did with respect to construction and other issues that were done under the order. We did have the city attorney review the, the referral before it was published and she made the interim judiciary, and she made a couple of suggestions on it. I don't know if she's with us now to, to answer any process questions, but no, there wasn't any issues as to whether or not what the direction was, was allowable or not. Hello, Ms. Silver.
Hello. Yes, that's, that's correct. There, the, the emergency services director does have authority to do what is proposed in the, in the staff report. And there are a number of implementation issues that I think the, the staff in consultation with the emergency services director will need to work out. But in general, the, the director does have the authority, we believe, to, to come up with a program like this. However, we would like council input on the scope of the program. It certainly will take some additional resources at a staff level. And so it would be helpful to, to get your input on the scope of the program, in particular, whether you like the, the option on, on the various cross streets from, from Santa Cruz. I think that's important. And then also, the location of where the restaurants would be, would, where the restaurant seating would occur, whether it would be in the street or in the sidewalk. Another issue, I think, is the curbside retail locations. Do you envision those being in the parking plazas or again on the street? And, and the city manager may have some additional issues to add as well.
And from a direction standpoint, Drew, I'm totally fine if we give it, if we just say to staff, we're interested, we are positive on this, go back. I think, actually, I think what's going to need to happen is tonight, if we want to go forward with it, we're going to say to staff, you know, this is something we think that we want, this is something that we want to do. Please create the plan and bring it back to us for, for final blessing. Basically, with all those nitty-gritty details, taking into account the, the input of what, of what the chamber was.
Yeah, I'll just chime in, unless the city manager wants to respond to that.
Well, I just wanted to add that the fire district sent us a letter as well and CCM this afternoon. So we need to meet internally and talk about that. But if the council's interested in this idea, that's what the feedback we need tonight and then we will come back. I think we'll try and shoot for the May 26th meeting, if that's feasible on our end, and come back and tell you, you know, what the details look like and, and what more we might need to, to make this happen.
Um, okay, thanks for that. I'll, I'll just sort of chime in really quickly with my thoughts. The aspect of sort of recapturing off-street parking or allowing restaurants or other, other, their sort of retail outlets to claim a portion of, of their off-site parking to allow for social distancing, I'm 100% supportive of. And we should definitely sort of explore that. When it comes to closing off on Santa Cruz, my direction would be, I'm, I'm certainly interested in, in the staff exploring. I have, I have concerns. And, and a lot of it has to do with, and I think that the, the ideas are noble and right, right? We do have this, this real big challenge of, of how retail outlets, how restaurants specifically make, make the numbers work going forward in a, in an era of social distancing. And so, and I do think the city needs to be a partner with them in, in solving that, that, that issue. And so I definitely commend Councilmembers Nash and Mueller for, for stepping out and trying to address this with, with the downtown, you know, with the downtown area first. I have to say, my hesitation comes with like, I have to say, my hesitation comes with, like, you know, past council projects, when it comes to Santa Cruz, have not generally been successful and successfully received. And so if I'm thinking about, like, the pocket parks, which, you know, from more recent history and even the history beyond that, some of the traffic calming measures that were implemented on Santa Cruz, you can still, they did sort of bulb bouts, and you could walk on the sidewalks, and you can see where those things existed and then had to be ripped up because there was an insane blowback from residents when it came to, you know, those specific efforts to calm traffic on Santa Cruz. So, all that to say, like, again, we see other cities doing this, and I definitely want to give staff the direction to explore. But at this moment, I'm still a little skeptical, right, of that, that we're not going to have a situation where where there's going to be a lot of residents in, we're going to react negatively to that. And so that's where I'm at now.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I understand perfectly where you're coming from. The pocket park downtown initially was received positively, and then overstayed its welcome for a very long time. And there was, and not to get too much into it, but there was, let's just say there was disagreement internally at City Hall, how long it should have been there and when it should have come out. But nonetheless, I understand that. But the one thing that we have to, the one thing that we don't want to do, I think, is hold the future accountable by the mistakes of the past, right? I mean, what we need to do is learn how to execute better. And so if there's a way that this is going to help people, and we put together a thoughtful plan, and it has a date certain for its end, and we execute it correctly, then we can help people through it. But the question is going to be, can we, you know, can we build, can we put together a good plan with a date certain at the end that meets all the things that need to be done? That being said, you know, one of the things that is different from those times in the past that we tried certain things on Santa Cruz is we're not doing it for aesthetics now. This isn't like a practice in aesthetics, or this is a practice in trying to help businesses survive. So it's just a little bit of a different motivation behind that.
Councilmember Carlton?
Hi, thank you. So why, I'm asking some questions from some of the emails I get, and some of it is is setting the record straight, because I think there's a lot of confusion around how this was maybe explained. Why, Starla, can you answer some questions?
I can, I can try.
So why is this being done? Is this being done to support our restaurants?
Well, that's my understanding. I mean, my understanding is it's an opportunity to take advantage of sort of the lack of traffic and parking downtown and to help the restaurants. I mean, I think it's pretty clear at this moment, if socially distancing requires that you're six feet away from the other tables in the restaurant, that's going to take a lot more room than most restaurants currently have to remain economically viable.
Right, but we don't really know what the guidelines are going to be for restaurants yet. So this, will this be done? We don't know when, I guess, the thing I want to set straight is people, there seemed to be this confusion that we can approve this, and then on Monday, everyone can go to their favorite restaurant and eat outside, and it's still illegal to have restaurants open. This is not a legal thing yet. It will be, and I think councilmember Mueller and Nash are completely right, and I love the idea. But I want to set the record straight so that we manage expectations. It is not legal. Even if we say we want it to be legal, it is not legal to have the restaurants open yet because the way it works, what the state says, the county can make stricter, but not less strict. What the county says, the city can make more strict, but not less strict. So until the county says, even if the state says restaurants are open, until the county says that they're, when they're able to open, then we can. But it's not a city decision as to whether or not the restaurants can open, other than for takeout. And please, everyone, I think I've gained 10 pounds since this started because I'm eating so much takeout, trying to support our restaurants. And I, you know, beg everyone to eat from your favorite restaurant, keep them in business. But just to set the record straight, passing this does not mean the restaurants can open other than takeout.
That's correct. At this point, right, we're just trying to gear up for it.
Right, which is great. I totally, I'm not, I don't want anyone to think I'm not in support of this. I just want to make that clear, because a lot of people are, I got phone calls this afternoon saying, yay, we want, you know, X restaurant to stay in business, please do this next week. And it's like, yeah. So I actually spoke to the county manager and said, when are you going to do this? And he said, could be June, could be July, could be later. He doesn't know, at this point, when this is going to be allowed. And I hope soon, because I prefer to eat in restaurants, as most people do, than constantly doing takeout. So my question is, that being what it is, when do we think, it's good to plan, but when do we think this would be implemented, Starla?
Well, you know, I don't know. I don't have a crystal ball, and I think we're just waiting to see what the governor's next order would be.
Okay, great. So what you're saying is that this wouldn't be implemented until we know that the restaurants can open? Because I'm also getting concerned from people who are elderly or whatever, and they want to make sure that they can still get their takeout. And again, we want to make sure that everyone is ordering as much takeout as possible to keep our restaurants going, at least on a basic level. So as soon as we found out from the county that the restaurants could open, then we would close the streets or however we structured that, whether it's side streets or the main street, to allow that. Is that correct?
That would be our intention. But I'm just going to say, if the governor made that announcement tomorrow, we're not going to have the streets open on Friday, right? We need some, yeah, we need a little period of time to get ready for it.
Regardless of what the governor says, we have to wait for the county as well. So I had some concerns that, thank you to councilmember Combs, I hadn't even thought about. But we always have to, the flow of traffic is like the flow of water. When you block one, it flows around this way. It doesn't just stop. And I think everyone's experienced the blockage that can happen, for example, around Trader Joe's with cars turning in. And we now have some of the traffic pylons out to block off the parking there so that people can pass each other more easily. Have we passed this by Nikki and our transportation staff to make sure that we expect to be safe for the traffic to flow around? Are we going to label it so that we don't have traffic going into neighborhoods, for example? Because I just don't want people to know it's blocked off, and then suddenly start careening down Middle Avenue or other areas and causing other issues.
So, great question. There are a lot of details to work out, and we are still working on all of them. But the staff is aware of the proposal.
Okay, great. And I also wanted to set the record straight again, that this is not, people talk about this being a test. And I heard that there was one environmental group that's all excited about coming forward with how this can be done permanently. I remember when Los Altos closed down that major road right next to the downtown road. And I thought it looked great, and I went into the pet store there, and I think I was buying a door for some reason. I went to the door store there. And both of the places complained with great emotion how much they hated having the street closed because it hurt their business. So having streets closed, and when we did the pocket park, we heard from the businesses how much they hated it. So having the streets closed helps restaurants, but it tends to hurt shopping businesses. So I want to make sure that people know this isn't a test. We are not doing this permanently. This is something that we're doing because we love our restaurants, and we want to do everything we can to keep our restaurants in business. Is that correct? This isn't a test?
Yeah.
It was a question for Starla, but okay.
Well, I think this is a proposal from two councilmembers. So, I mean, I think, I think maybe Ray should answer that question.
So you guys are thinking of doing this permanently? So I can't hear you, Ray.
You're muted.
So, no, we're not thinking about doing it permanently, and the referral doesn't indicate that as such, because it's under the emergency powers. So, I mean, a lot of the things that we're setting the record straight on, just they're not in the referral. Like, the referral said that it was only for the, you know, it was staged, it would only happen when it was appropriate within the shelter and pace timeline. It's not a permanent thing because it's being done under the emergency powers. I appreciate you setting the record straight if there are people out there who think those things, but they're just not in the referral. The one thing I would add, too, though, is that the referral makes it clear it's not just the restaurants who can use the space. It's also for businesses who also will have to be going through social distancing that's contemplated in the next phase. So we're talking about creation of an open-air market so they can get their capacity back, too. Because as we know, in the current, where we are currently, businesses are shut down. They are, you know, they're not, you know, there are businesses you can't go into right now. And so, just like those restaurants are going to need social distancing, it's anticipated that we will need social distancing for our businesses as well, that they can put their wares on the street. So, and that is within the referral. It talks about goods being put onto the street, not just restaurant and dining. So hopefully, this will help those businesses and not hurt them in the current circumstance. In terms of whether or not, you know, candidly, it's probably, although we'd love to do it as fast as possible, it's not going to hurt us to have that extra time contemplated in the referral to actually create a really good plan and make this a really good experience for everyone.
Right, and I don't mean to be negative. As I say, one of the problems with a bunch of people sitting at home is rumors have become too easily flown around, particularly with. And I want to make sure that people.
Can I interrupt for a moment? I just, I need a quick bathroom break.
Okay, and I just want to say, I'm not taking it aggressively at all, Cap. I'm not taking it bad at all. So it's good.
We make sure that it's completely clear what we're doing, and we put all the rumors to rest.
Okay, I appreciate it. Sorry, Cecilia.
That's okay. A five-minute break, and we can continue.
Okay.
All of the city council members can turn off their microphones and cams. Thank you.
I know that Ms. Silver came on. I didn't know if she had a comment or a follow-up to someone's question or comment. I didn't know if she had a comment or a follow up to someone's question or comment.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So I did just want to clarify one question that came up about restaurants reopening. So the state has that restaurants can't reopen and they've issued some guidelines. I, that, that guidance, that guidance actually came out today. But the, in order to allow for the reopening of, of restaurants, a county has to seek what they call a variance or a permission to, to allow for the reopening of restaurants. And to qualify for that, there has to be.
Is that a variant per restaurant or per city or per county?
No, it's per county.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yes. And so far, only two counties have qualified. And they're rural counties that have not experienced any COVID related infections and hospitalizations and deaths. So there's a series of COVID related issues that need to be addressed before allowing the restaurants to reopen. So I just wanted to, to put that to the record in terms of setting expectations that we may not see restaurants reopen as quickly as we were originally hoping.
Thank you. May I, may I? Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Just to reiterate, in case anyone missed it, it may be while till we're able to open the restaurants. However, I want to do a shout out to Fran Dean and the Chamber of Commerce. They have a fantastic website that has a list of all the downtown businesses, and they're not only restaurants where you can order things. You can order things from Cheeky Monkey and they have a program where you can order things and donate toys to Ronald McDonald House and she'll do that delivery. You can order things from Alice Grace. I buy almost like a crazy amount of my, my casual clothes I buy from Alice Grace. They're fantastic. And Tiger's offering a 20% discount. And if you go to the website, they'll list all the downtown places that are open that you can shop from now. Please, please, people, shop there. Don't go to Amazon. You can buy your things online downtown Menlo Park and keep our businesses alive. I just wanted to make sure that people knew that, they knew that resource, that website was there. And a lot of them are offering great deals now, so please take advantage of it.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. And I believe before the break, we left off at, I believe, Councilmember Mueller was speaking specifically about the concerns that Councilmember Carlton had. I have a question, and this is more about staff, considering what we, our previous agenda item, E1, and that this would be something that staff would do? Or is this something that we would be bringing in someone to, to take the lead in looking at design, the best, the best solutions for downtown in putting in outside dining and closing the streets?
So, well, I'll take a first stab at that. I think at least initially, it would be on the staff to work on it. I don't think, we have a process for bringing in consultants, you know, some kind of RFP, a process for proposals and then interviews. And so it would, I think that process would delay our implementation. Now, you know, we learn by what succeeds and what doesn't succeed. And so we can modify as we go forward because all of the installations are intended to be temporary. So does that answer the question?
Okay, and didn't recently, wasn't there a walkthrough? I'm not sure if Councilmember Mueller in the chambers or if it was Councilmember Nash.
So Councilmember Nash and I did a walkthrough with city staff and identified a bunch of areas that were in need of, I would, I would say, maintenance and talked about bringing, this was right before COVID-19 hit, but we were preparing to bring forward a referral talking about, and we were doing it through the budget process, actually, to talk about ongoing maintenance schedule for the downtown. That, because believe it or not, downtown doesn't have a maintenance schedule which is annual every year. And, and I think we've seen what the effects of that has wrought in terms of what you see in the crosswalks and with the cracked brick and things like that. And so the idea was we would talk about it with you all in the budget process and get it ingrained into the budget process. Now, obviously, things have changed a little bit. But I would, I think that that is a project probably that we look at bringing forward immediately when the economy starts to recover as a public works project. And it might be something we talk about midstream in terms of putting people back to work once there's money for such things. So, but it's, so, but anyway, yeah, that's where it was, just background on that.
Okay, thank you. And I do not have the staff report directly in front of me, but are the, the empty storefronts going to be a part of the process? Even though I know your focus are restaurants and dining?
You know, candidly, the empty storefronts, what I've heard from folks is that some of that is actually a product of buildings being for sale. So there are leases that are being, I know at least two properties downtown where the buildings were put up for sale. And so they let the leases run out on those buildings. I had a conversation very recently with someone who was looking for property down there. And actually, despite all of those vacancies, no one was willing to lease to them. So I think that's something in terms of vacancies downtown that we probably, I mean, what I would suggest actually, and I'll just suggest it now. What the idea that I was going to be bringing to the council on this issue is that we actually try to bring forward like a blue ribbon committee to talk about economic recovery in the downtown and how we go ahead and take advantage of the downturn that we're about to see, to see what we can pull out of it. It's something that was already scheduled for somewhat in the specific plan review that was going to take place. How about, I think the specific plan review is on the blocks now. So the question is, can we, can we capture a lot of the wonderful thought share from the brilliant people we have in the city to create a blue ribbon committee to try to help inform some things that we could be doing policy wise to, to get the benefits that we're looking for in what I guess will have to be classified as a rebuild coming out of this event?
It makes a lot of sense to focus on downtown, especially with the pre-COVID and now during. So I definitely agree with that. Councilmember Carlton?
Sure, I think that's a fantastic idea, 100% behind that. I don't know whether it's appropriate to bring it up now or, or at the end, but I'd spoken briefly to Cara, to our city attorney, and, and I've looked into it. And Los Angeles and a lot of cities are doing attacks on houses that are empty more than six months. And then they're taking those funds and using those to help fund services for the homeless. It addresses the people that just buy the houses and keep them out of the market, which artificially inflates the prices as well as, as exacerbating the housing stock issue. And it might be something that we look into in the future in terms of the, the strip of land, the median, both downtown and in other areas. I've been getting a lot of feedback from people. I think one of the calls, someone spoke to Mayor Taylor as well, about how all the weeds are exacerbating people's allergies and it's becoming a health issue. Someone else was complaining that the weeds have actually gotten so advanced that they're becoming seeds and blowing into yards and causing other issues. And someone had a really great idea potentially, I don't know. Again, I'm just throwing it out there of, he asked if he could pay for his gardener to come and, and clean the area. And I told him not to do it yet. But, you know, we could have people sponsoring or different things. If, if we really don't have the funds to do some of the maintenance, we can look at creative ways of bringing this forward. But before we get off topic on the downtown, I thought that, that Councilmember Combs had an interesting idea. Would it be possible to provide the extra tables and area, in the parking area and still have the parking go through Santa Cruz? Was that what you were suggesting, Councilmember Combs? And, and is that for safety reasons or why were you, you threw it out there and then no one, we haven't really discussed it. So I just wanted to discuss it and find out your thoughts behind that.
I was just responding to an aspect of the proposal from Councilmember Nash and Mueller. So, so as part of the proposal, they, they have also talked about looking at off-street parking for, I think, Councilmember Mueller mentioned, like Mardini's, Cafe Zoe, places where there is, there is like, you know, off-street parking or there are parking lots. And of course, they are required by City Code to have a certain amount of, of, of parking spots to support their, their retail establishment. And as I understand it, part of the proposal is looking at essentially relaxing that requirement so that they can repurpose some of that, those, 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 those parking spots, you know, for, for use by, by customers. And so that's the, so I wasn't thinking of this as, this is, I saw that as separate from the downtown proposal and I wasn't like sort of conflating those two.
Thank you, that makes a lot of sense. I wanted to make sure I understood. So that's for like Cafe Zoe, so they had a chance to, to go outside or, or even maybe some of the parking lot in the Sharon Heights area. Exactly. Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure your idea was thought through and understood.
Are there any other follow-up comments or questions on this item? I have actually a couple of questions for, for our city manager. So just thinking in terms of how this item was brought to the council, Ms. Starla Jerome Robinson, we have to wait until she appears on the screen.
Yep.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions of follow-up, just thinking, are there any other recommendations as the emergency services manager that we could be doing in the city?
So, great question. We have been doing sort of an internal evaluation. We're looking at the minimum wage as one. The, and we would come back to the council of that, but this, this might not be the time to, we'll, we'll come back with that for the council. There's a heritage tree ordinance issue as well, although it's still an evaluation. We may recommend just proceeding with that with a carve out for a few areas. And there's a third one that we're considering. So we will be coming back with some other options for the councils to consider.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller, did you need any additional feedback from the council?
No, I mean, I appreciate the thoughtfulness of the discussion. I appreciate the questions. I think it's important that we vet this out and get the very best work product as possible. I think the concerns about with some of the things that happened in the past are well founded. We want to make sure we don't repeat mistakes from the past. We think through these things because the intent is to help people. And if it's not executed well, it won't. So I appreciate that. We had really solid, critical discussion. I think staff is going to, you know, has time to put together a really solid work product on this. And then ultimately, you know, if, when we get to the end of this, it, it's something that doesn't make sense. Will I be disappointed? Yeah, because I want to try to help people. But we gotta, we gotta do what, we gotta do what makes sense. So I'm, I'm encouraged because it sounds like everyone wants to roll up their sleeves and see if we can make it work for that purpose. So, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay. Was there any other?
Yes. Just want to make sure that staff is clear on city council direction and confirm with Cara that no motion is required for this?
That's correct. As I heard the discussion, staff will go back and, and develop a proposal and then we'll bring it back to the council for further discussion.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, she can't be here, she couldn't be here tonight. But I just wanted to give a shout out to my colleague, Councilman Nash. She put in a lot of time and effort on this as well, so I know that she cared about it. And I, so I know she would have appreciated being in the discussion with all of you and all the thoughtfulness that you put into the work product tonight too. So thoughts are with her this evening.
Thank you. Okay, that is our last item for regular business. So we will move on to informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's efforts to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city council member, city staff member, or any member of the public can request to make a comment or ask a question on any informational item. And Councilmember Carlton, your hand is raised.
It is raised. I just wanted to do a shout out to the police. The, the report says that they retrieved four stolen vehicles using the license plate readers. And that's great, that's, that's why we bought them and, and I'm delighted to see that they're working. And so I just wanted to say thank you for doing a good job. Keep up the good work. And, and it would be great if the, the chief could please convey in the next staff meeting, thanks from the city council, if you guys are in agreement.
Is the chief still here?
I'm here, Mayor.
Councilmember Carlton wanted to convey her thanks to.
Right, and I think, I heard it and I'll pass it on to the staff.
On, on behalf of all of us, it's just nice to see the license plate readers work and do what they're, they're intended to do. And, and thanks very much for doing a good job.
Very good, thank you.
I actually have a question about the, the license plate readers. And was there a request from the Willow's neighborhood a few years ago about having them there installed in that area? Because I know they're not throughout the city. I don't know if anyone remembers that or not. I was not on council at that time.
I don't remember it.
Madam Mayor, in 2014, when these were approved, they were not approved as stationary ALPRs. They are on vehicles, there are three vehicles that have them attached to them, so they move around the city. There is no stationary ALPRs in the city of Menlo Park.
Okay, thank you.
I do remember discussing it with Chief Perdini at the time, though. I don't think either of us will forget those discussions.
There, there were, there were privacy issues.
So they did, the police department did a very good job conveying their case back then. I think it's good that they are mobile though, because if there is an area in the city that's having a, an uptick in crime, it's good to be able to move them.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments on informational items? Ms. Heron, do we have a public comment on informational?
Yes, so at this time, we'll request any member of the public wishes to speak on one of our info items, items F1 through F6, to engage their raised hand icon in the far right of their screen. We did have some raised and it looks like they might have put them down. We'll give just a couple more seconds. So again, if any member of the public wishes to speak on the info items F1 through F6, please engage the hand to the right side of your screen and we can unmute you. Couple more seconds here. I have hands that continue to just keep going up and down, so I just want to confirm that they should be down. Okay, seeing none. Mr. Conlin, Greg Conlin, do you have a public comment on any of the information items?
There was an item about the minimum wage. What was that, what does that refer to?
We don't have any items on tonight's agenda regarding the minimum wage.
The city manager mentioned she was gonna not bring it up, or she did bring it up, or I never understood what she would say.
So to answer that question, I was just saying that we may bring it back to the council to consider not imposing the increase in the minimum wage.
Thank you for clarifying, Starla. Seeing no further public comment, Mayor Taylor, you may continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And thank you for clarifying, Ms. Jerome Robinson. Okay, so there are no more questions or comments on informational. The last item on the agenda, actually, there's two more, city council member reports and city manager reports. So there are not any reports. And Ms. Starla Jerome Robinson, I'm gonna, I'm assuming that your last report out just now was your report out as city manager.
Well, I do have one more. I just want the council to know that the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors approved a million dollars today for the city of Menlo Park's underpass at the Middle Plaza project. So yes, thank you to the Board of Supervisors and for working with us through this process. It was residual dollars from the 2000 Cup, but I think Supervisor Semidian has really shown incredible leadership and we appreciate all of his creativity and support through that process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I keep wanting to call him Senator Semidian. Thank you, Joe Semidian. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. And if there are any other report outs, then this meeting is adjourned. Bye.